All right, you guys ready? All right, we'll get things started. If everybody's signed in, thank you so much if you're speaking. When somebody's at the podium, just be sure to be respectful of their time and their voice. Just please keep the side chatter to a minimum, phones on vibrate, and if you're standing, just please don't block the doorway. Sorry about the seating capacity. If you have any questions, please direct them to the board and we will ask the appropriate party and that'll help with any cross-talk. We want to make sure everybody's voice is heard tonight, but if it gets repetitive, try to, you know, to be concise as possible in the sake of time. With all that being said, thank you all for being here and the next order of business will be for Charlie to swear everybody in. Who's speaking, whoever's speaking tonight?
If you all sign into speaking, stand, raise your right hand, please. Do you swear affirming statements to make the statement to be the truth to the best of your information and belief? I think I saw everybody say yes.
I think he said... If there's nothing else from the board or Mr. Perkins, we'll give it to Mr. Shirley to get things started.
All right. Okay, this is a special hearing to reexamine the application for the property at 650 South Broadway. Again, it is a conditional use... Conditional use permit for the operation of a wellness spa at this address. It is a residentially zoned property, R1B. It's just at a half an acre or so, right on South Broadway here in downtown Georgetown. Staff is recommending approval. Here's the subject property in question. We'll have a few different views of it here in just a moment. And just to confirm the zoning of it, conditional use permits are just that. They are based around the application for a use which would be essential or would promote the public health, safety, and welfare in one or more zones, but which would impair the integrity of character in a zone in which it is located or adjoining zones unless restrictions on location, size, extent, and character performance are imposed in addition to those imposed in the zoning regulation. Conditional uses may be permitted in districts designated under the ordinance, but only when specifically approved by the board. Conditional use permit is legal authorization to undertake a use which is not typically allowable by right within a certain zone. Those are issued by yourself as well as administrative officials within the staff. And when you're making the judgment based on approval, a statement of factual determination must be made by the Board of Adjustment which justifies the issuance of said permit. And a statement of the special conditions must be attached to this which must be met in order for the use to be permitted. Again, conditional use permits are just that. They're an allowance of a use that's not typically allowed in the zone by right, allowed to operate with certain conditions and remediative measures put in place to remediate the impacts to the surrounding community. Section 432 of our ordinance does list professional offices as a conditional use in R1B district which this property resides in. Professional offices, again, are defined as a place of business where a professional or their staff render services to clients. Staff has determined that this type of use would fall within this umbrella. Getting into the specifics about the proposed use itself, applicant has stated there will be four other employees. Business hours are 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, 10:00 to 2:00 on Saturdays, no business hours on Sundays. Applicant has stated that they serve approximately three clients an hour, you know, over the course of a regular month of business. They've also stated that they do not entertain any walk-in business. It is serviced by appointment only. Parking for this site will be limited to no more than 10 off-street spaces. This is a condition that's been recommended by staff after some site visits and consults with the applicant themselves. And a parking plan must be submitted to this regard before any improvements are made to the site. This parking plan also must address stormwater and runoff, just to, you know, protect the adjoining properties as well as the streetscape. And also, landscape and screening that satisfies the intent of our landscape ordinance must be supplied by the applicant before the start of any business operations. These measures are undertaken essentially to kind of protect the surrounding area from intrusions by, you know, basically sights, sounds, that sort of thing, headlights coming and going, noises and sights of traffic. This plan must be submitted to staff for review and approval before the installation of any of these measures and again, before the beginning of business. This speaks to the intent of our landscape and land use buffers ordinance. Again, we kind of briefly discussed it, but again, the intent specifically as it pertains to vehicular use areas, which would be essentially one of the major points of impact would this use be allowed and permitted. You know, the clients coming and going, staff coming and going, parking area and pavement and impervious service that may be added. So staff has determined that vehicular use areas which are parking, access, things of that nature would be one of the greatest areas of impact as it pertains to the character of the surrounding community. So we've recommended that measures be put in place that satisfy the intent of this ordinance. Again, it's to require buffering between incompatible land uses. Again, while this is still a residentially zoned property and will remain a residentially zoned property, if approved, it will be taking, undertaking a commercial-style use. As such, you know, that change of use within the zone simply necessitates some sort of buffering to protect one from the other. It also protects, preserves, and promotes the aesthetic appeal, character, and value of the community, and also to promote public health and safety through, again, remediative measures. I just wanted to kind of highlight also the specifics of the vehicular use area screening ordinance. If you'll note there, the red box denotes that typically we put these measures in place if these areas adjoin property boundaries. However, for the most part, these proposed vehicular use areas do not adjoin, although staff does still feel like it is necessary or appropriate to require said measures. Again, it's a differing use in a residential zone, so whatever we can suggest or recommend or require to address those concerns is appropriate. And we'll see some other details here. This is a drawing submitted by the applicant. They've been speaking with a contractor to discuss options for adding additional parking and circulation-type areas. It actually kind of aligns with an idea that staff, you know, had of remediation of existing impervious surface and reuse. This drawing proposes that they'll add about 1,275, I think, square feet of pavement. I'll let the applicant speak more to their plans for that. This is kind of part of a beginnings of what we'd like to see for a submittal as far as specifics of like, you know, what they are going to do to make sure it's done well and done right. This rendering here kind of incorporates not only the proposed vehicle use area you see there in pink, which would be a, essentially, an expansion and remediation of the impervious surface that remains. It's pretty well kind of slab-on-grade foundation areas of pre-existing buildings that are not there anymore. The applicant has proposed to kind of regrade this area, add a little bit of extension to accommodate parking and circulation. And that's the highlighted purple area there, which is approximate. Now, the green is all the landscape measures that we are currently kind of proposing. Now, again, these are approximate. These are very early in nature. We do expect and require a detailed plan from the applicant if they so do receive approval. So typically, depending on the area of the property, you either see one tree planted over 30 to 40 feet, depending on the scenario, whether it be VOA or property perimeter. And then also, these trees are to be accompanied by either a three-foot-tall contiguous hedge or six-foot-tall double hedge, again, depending on the location on the property and the purpose of the screening. And so this kind of details the halo that would be created by the screening measures. Across the northern boundary there of the property line, the applicant has indicated they've undertaken discussions with the adjoining property owner about the installation of a fence, typically a privacy-style fence, which is also recommended in our landscape and buffers ordinance, six-foot tall or so. Again, I will let the applicant speak to their plans for that. But staff had hoped that this rendering would provide a pretty good visual of what we would expect to see at final installation if they did receive approval. So overall, our findings are that the approval of the conditional use permit will positively contribute to the public health, safety, or welfare, will not negatively impact the character of the general vicinity, given that the conditions of approval are applied. Those are all, whether those be the conditions of approval staff has recommended at this time, or if the board so chooses to amend or add additional conditions, that would be our finding there with that. The proposed conditional use permit for a wellness spa does fit within the category of professional office, meets the description of such, and shall as such follow the restrictions set forth by the ordinance. Plans to improve or expand vehicular use areas are subject to planned submittal, review, and approval by commissioned staff before any work begins to include stormwater and runoff remediation measures. Landscape and buffering that satisfies the intent of the ordinance shall be installed prior to the begin of business, again, subject to planned submittal, review, and approval by staff. These are, pretty well, are typical conditions of approval for conditional use permits. Again, we are recommending approval. However, number six does, let me back up. Number five, with conditional use permits, they are only valid as long as the property is owned by the applicant, which has come forth in the beginning. If this property were to ever sell or transfer, or the use were discontinued, Mr. Perkins may be able to speak to the timeline of that, but specifically, sale or transfer of the property nullifies the permit. It does not travel with the property. It is retained by ownership. So in moving on to number six, any signage that's proposed by the applicant, if they were to receive approval, shall adhere to the same standards as those set forth in home occupations, which are basically, "I run a small business out of my home," which is a separate type of conditional use permit. This application is not eligible for home occupation status as they will not live there. But even so, staff deems it appropriate that they'd be held to the same signage standards, which are very minimal and discreet. And these are reviewed in section six and seven of the ordinance, of our sign ordinance as well. These, again, are all things we've kind of spoke about before, seven being, again, speaking to any expansion or improvement of vehicle circulation or pavement. Number eight, again, we spoke about it earlier, that parking shall be limited to no more than 10 off-street spaces, subject to review and approval of a plan. Number nine speaks to the fact that the property does join US 25 South Broadway. It is a state road. As such, any improvements of pavement within state right-of-way, which should be determined by Kentucky Transportation Cabinet District 7, in joint effort with the City Engineers of Georgetown, would establish the distance of right-of-way of that roadway onto the property. If any improvements or anything of that nature were to occur within state right-of-way, they'd have to get approval by the state and presumably the city. And then again, number 10 there speaks to the landscape requirements that will be imposed pending approval.
Okay. Any questions specific to Mr. Shirley on this? Did you?
I was just gonna do the tagline at the end of Mr. Shirley's presentation.
Do it.
Just to clarify findings for the board, with our recommendation, staff is recommending approval. That staff does find that this wellness spa will improve the public health, safety, and welfare of the community in one or more zones. We do also recognize, though, that without conditions, there is likely to be a negative impairment to the community character and form. That is why we are recommending these specific conditions. We feel that these specific conditions are reasonable in nature, although we do defer to the board that if they feel there should be additional conditions applied, that it's at your discretion to apply as you see fit. And finally, though, staff does also find that in applying these specific conditions to this specific proposal, those potential negative impairments to community character and form will be remediated to a substantial level. And then we would open it up for questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the planning and zoning staff?
I do have a question.
Sure.
I am the neighbor that is next door.
Could you please?
I am the neighbor that is next door.
Okay.
To the north, and I have not spoken to anyone about fencing or anything.
For the sake of the record, a question has been proposed. Instead of me, then looking over to the applicant, it may be best to receive all questions.
Right, I didn't know if it...
That's fine.
So you don't have a question for the staff particularly, more for the applicant?
Well, just to the fact that he spoke to that and I have not talked to anyone.
Yeah, we're gonna have the applicant speak next.
Again, for the minutes, though, if she could state her name on the record.
Lynn McKinney.
We may know it, but the people who are actually right at the minute don't.
Okay. And yes, and when you come to the podium, please state your name and address, correct? Okay. Before you speak. So we'll move on to the applicant, if the applicant's here, to speak.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Jasmine Wheeler. I'm the owner of Air Wellness Spa.
You need to speak up.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Can you restate that?
Oh, I'm Jasmine Wheeler. I'm the owner of Air Wellness Spa.
Thank you.
So I can go ahead?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so, yeah, basically what they said, I'm just kind of reiterating that, that, you know, I have a wellness spa. I've had it for six years here in Georgetown, in the historic district downtown. Main thing is I want to own my own property now for my business. This matches exactly what my dream would be. I know that the main things that are kind of like up in the air are like the integrity and character, as well as promoting the health, safety, and welfare of the area. So kind of wrote down some little things about that. So I feel like my wellness spa would be least likely to impair the integrity and character, especially given those conditions, because number one is like the hours of operation. Like, I don't operate on evening hours. I don't operate on night hours or early morning hours. I only operate on four midday hours on Saturdays and no Sunday hours, so the times that you're usually at rest and at home, I'm gone. The extended lot, the double lot, allows for hidden parking in the back, so it's hidden from the front view. With my low number of employees and the appointment-only basis, not allowing walk-ins, it maintains low traffic. I feel like my adjectives align with South Broadway. When you think of either South Broadway or my business, the words that kind of come to mind are like elegant and clean, upscale, luxurious, stylish, and classy, so they align well together. Being an aesthetics practice, the priority is obviously to maintain and improve the property to align with the neighborhood's appeal and to ensure a professional and welcoming appearance. Coming to the area are going to be high-end clients receiving quiet services. There's no major structural changes. Property will maintain its residential character. And then another big note is that I do have six years of experience operating out of and preserving Georgetown's historic buildings, so I know how to take care of that. I know the importance behind that. As far as promoting the health, safety, and welfare, again, being open for six years as a small business owner, the past few years, I've really wanted to put everything back into the community. Obviously, Wellness Spa, you know that it's gonna promote health, but for those of you that haven't been in Wellness Spa, here are kind of like a little bit of tidbits to get a better understanding. On average, we help clients lose a total of 500 pounds per month collectively, with the effect of them coming off of blood pressure medicines, diabetic medicines, and ultimately decreasing their mortality risk. We provide vitamin therapies for people with cancer, autoimmune disorders, and many other disorders and diseases. We prevent teens from harmful acne medications with our treatments. We provide aesthetic services to help individuals be more comfortable in the skin that they're in, and we keep the community out of the emergency room by providing therapies for acute illnesses such as migraines, COVID, stomach flu, kidney stones, and prevention of those. As far as protecting the safety of the community, in the recent past, we provided free IV vitamin therapies to all the officers and staff with the Scott County Sheriff's Department and the Georgetown Police Department after the unfortunate death of Deputy Caleb Conley. And then as far as welfare promotion, I didn't start this business rich, like I came out of poverty, so as soon as I started to turn a profit, my number-one goal was to put it back into Georgetown. So some of the things that I've done in the past few years, just for my business, not personally, is that we have been an official drop location for the Toys for Tots, a drop location for Amen House's annual prom dress drive, providing free services to those who donated, a drop location for Amen House Food Drive, providing spa money for food items. We were platinum sponsors for the Scott County Women's Entrepreneur Show, provided free facials to all the females living at the Gathering Place, Elizabeth Village, and Girls for Prom through the Amen House. Lilly sponsors for Cadence Cause. We sponsored Scott County High School Junior through the Miss Kentucky Scholarship Foundation. Donations contributed to the Amen House Denim and Pearls Benefit. Donations to local American Red Cross Bluegrass Chapter One. Silver sponsors, as well as gold sponsors, to Family 5K. Donated to and were sponsors to Jake's Way. Donated to the Scott County Women's Club. Bronze sponsors and donors to the Gathering Place Mission Gala. Donations to Toyota's Walk to End Alzheimer's. Donations to Rath Basbitch, a nonprofit organization that supports programs for children. And we sponsored and donated to various causes for the local schools, including six-week internship to help them learn on small businesses. So, of course, we plan to even do more, you know, the more that we turn, the more that we're able to effectively give back to this town.
What are the specific hours of operation that you anticipate Monday through Friday and Saturday?
So Monday through Friday is 9:00 to 6:00. Saturdays is 10:00 to 2:00.
And nothing on Sunday?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Mine was about to walk in. I know you addressed there wouldn't be any walk-ins, but at your location that you're currently at, do you have the same practice?
Correct.
Has there been any problems where there are, like, people that try to walk in?
The only time, very randomly, I'd say maybe once every two to three weeks, there'd be someone coming in just to inquire what kind of services that we provide, but that's about it.
That's all I have. Go ahead. Good. What do you think the best thing to do here would be as far as questions, you know?
If the...
So they have to stand up and say their name every time?
Yeah, I would think if the applicant is finished for the moment.
Yeah.
My thought is open it up for public questions.
Okay.
You can go down the signing sheet, or you can just have them stand and, you know, kind of make their own line.
Okay.
And then, once, and maybe before we even finish it, but every now and then at least, have the applicant then respond to some of the questions, and that way we can kind of keep them fairly close together, so we don't...
While the applicant's at the podium and the person's at their seat? Okay.
Well, that's not the way we usually do that.
No.
They ask a bunch of questions, then the applicant answers. I'm just thinking, there may be more questions than we wanted to save.
Right.
Too many of them.
Maybe 10 at a time?
Yeah, maybe 10 at a time, something like that, so we don't get too far afield and kind of miss some of the points. And then she can answer those, and then we can, you know, have some more votes.
But the person will still have to stand and state their name and address, correct?
Oh, yes, absolutely, yes.
Okay. So we'll open it up for questions, then?
Some people may have statements to make.
Correct.
Conversation.
Right.
And that's fine, too.
Yeah.
Can we go down the list?
It's definitely something I thought about.
You can, you're welcome to it.
Excuse me, Nathan.
Yes.
I have a question.
Sure.
If I could ask. I'm still a little bit...
Name and address.
Yeah, I'm sorry, because I'm Dana Booker. I live at 604 South Broadway Street.
Okay.
I'm still kind of confused on your proposal. There was one picture that showed a, that Rhett was showing.
Oh, you want her at the podium?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
You want me to stand there?
Yeah, please, sorry. That's my fault, I didn't make that clear.
So...
Thank you.
In looking at Rhett's drawing earlier of where the house is located, and then the building there to the left of it, which is an older garage, there was a handicap driveway there. Yes, right there.
Okay.
Is the building going to stay as a garage, or would that also be parking? And then, number two, my other question is, is the parking already approved, or is it just a proposal at this time? I wasn't clear on that.
Sure.
Excuse me, your name again, please?
Diana Booker.
Last name again?
Booker.
Booker.
Very good. That's what I thought you said, but I wouldn't know.
There is no parking approved at this time. It's just all kind of part of a developing idea. It's not something we've reviewed nor approved. Staff will not review or approve anything until we move past this point. As such, there would kind of be no reason to do so. It would be a condition of approval that this plan would be submitted, reviewed, and approved, as well as the landscaping.
And what about her first question with the building?
I can't speak to the use of the building. I would let the applicant or their contractor, who I believe is also here, speak to that.
Sure.
My name is David Wolf. I have friends, they keep calling me the contractor. I drew this sketch with about an hour's notice. It is close to scale. It is not perfect. The lot is a little crooked. The garage would stay a garage. The reason that there's a handicap symbol in that spot is I have helped businesses, small family businesses, in exactly this same situation in historic buildings in the past here in Georgetown. And when I was drawing this up, I was looking for a good spot to put a handicap spot close to the main entrance for people who need to park close.
Sure.
That's the only reason it's there. This is just a rough sketch.
And that would be a spot for them to park in?
It's existing pavement. The garage is gonna stay a garage.
But would the handicap parking person go into the garage?
No, sir.
Or just short of the garage?
It is just short of the garage. It is just an existing... We wanted to keep everything as close to, keep it as simple as possible, keep all of the existing structures the way they are. The majority of the new parking proposed is over top of old concrete foundations that are just falling apart right there, so it would be cleaning that area up. The new paving would be a permeable paver that helps with stormwater runoff. It doesn't cause any additional runoff into storm sewers. It's really good for the environment. It's an eco-friendly paver. They really just want to make this property look as good as they possibly can. This is an aesthetics business. They want everything to look nice. They're wonderful people. I've known them for quite a while. I think they'd be really, really good neighbors for everyone there. And there was a lady next door, ma'am. I don't know who may have spoke to who, but I know that they are willing to pay for the fence and definitely want you to be included in the design aspect of it all the way through, you to have your say. It would be, again, you know, I mean, bordering your property. They want to be the best neighbors they can possibly be. And I've helped, I've very successfully helped other businesses in the same situation. I'm not getting paid to be here. I'm just a friend of, you know, the proposed owners and... But...
Thank you, yes. And Ms. Wheeler, can you verify that that's the plan for that parking spot? And is there any other use for that garage that you plan to do? Okay. Okay. Ms. Booker, is that okay?
Sure, thank you.
And that worked out well because David Wolf was the first name on this list, so...
You might say that the applicant's answer was no to your question. That way the person doing the minutes will know also.
That the applicant's answer was...
Well, you asked her to confirm about the garage. Is there any other plan for it? She said no.
Correct.
Well, and you said that's good or something. Well, person doing the minutes doesn't know she answered no.
Okay. So...
Now she does, because we just talked about it.
Thanks for keeping me straight, I appreciate it.
I gotta say one more thing, too. I didn't state my address.
That's fair.
I live very close also. I don't live on South Broadway, but I've walked my children to Garth and Georgetown Middle.
What's the address for you, Mr. Wolf?
My address is 109 McFarland. I live on the opposite side, close to Indian Acres, for 25 years.
Okay.
So I, while I might not be on the same street, I am a neighbor also, so...
All right, well, and continuing with that, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna go down the list. Is that, everybody okay with that? All right. The next on the list is Gus Binham. And just state your name and address.
Gus Binham. I live at 611 South Hamilton. I also own 725 South Hamilton that is adjacent to this property to the rear, across someone's yard. That's a residential neighborhood, needs to be preserved as a residential neighborhood. We start granting a conditional... We start granting conditional uses, we're opening up a can of worms that it becomes, it could become commercial uses down the road. We've got too many commercial uses on the other end of Broadway and into town, which is appropriate for town. It, it is not a public health facility, this lady advocates. It's a private practitioner fee for service. It, we need to preserve the commu, that area of town, that corridor into town as a residential area.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Binham. Susanna Prather?
I'm Susanna Prather. I live at 626 South Broadway, and I want to see it kept as a neighborhood. It's almost historical in nature, and that particular house is surrounded by other residences, and I would not like to see the commercial aspects start nibbling into the neighborhood. I feel there are other places in Georgetown where businesses can be more appropriately housed. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn McKinney?
I've already introduced myself one time, but I'm Lynn McKinney.
And address?
I live next door.
Okay.
To the north, at 644 South Broadway, and I've lived there since 1985. I join that property, as I just said, on the north, and I am concerned about this proposal, and I strongly oppose approval of this application for some of the reasons that have already been stated. This is an older residential neighborhood with many historical homes, and honestly, 650 South Broadway is among the oldest. This is not a business district. I believe that approval of this application also, I also believe that it will open the gate to future conditional use for business. And as has been confirmed tonight, it is going to be non-owner occupied as a business. Once this type of business is approved, it sets a precedence that will make it harder to deny future applications. There was a list provided, even though it was older and not allowed, but it just goes to show that you go back and look at what's been done before, and it does have the potential to change the entire makeup of this quiet residential neighborhood. It will absolutely, in my opinion, alter the character of that general vicinity. I also have a concern, after owning the property for 40 years where I live, that it will negatively impact the value of our residential properties. I don't want any business, but especially a non-owner occupied business right next door to me, and I can't imagine that any potential buyer would want that either. I appreciate that in the presentation, it was mentioned that someone talked to me about the fence. Here's what transpired. There were two or three gentlemen, I think one was very, very young, out there one afternoon, walking the property line. And I, from my deck, said, hello? Hello? And they finally heard me, and I said, are you surveying that property? And he said, no, ma'am, we're just walking it, but if we buy it, if, if we close, we will have a survey done. And I said, I was somewhat interested in a survey myself for a fence on the other side of my property that needs to be replaced. And I said, just for the record, I don't want you there. And he kind of laughed, and I kind of laughed, and I said, it is nothing personal. And it is, it is nothing personal. I appreciate the value of their business, whatever that may be, whether it's truly wealth, you know, whatever it is. I, I appreciate that. I admire the fact that they contribute to the community and support charities in the community. My argument is, it is a business. It is a non-owner occupied business with signage and concrete parking that will not, more than likely, will not be converted back to residential property at any time. And so, I hope that you'll listen to those of us who are here tonight that have lived in this neighborhood, myself for 40 years, raised my children there, had my family there. We're invested in our homes, and we have been for years, and there are many of us here. Now, I appreciate that there are some here also in support, but they're not invested in our neighborhood. They can attend this business anywhere that it's held. And so I hope that you'll listen to our reasoning and vote no to this proposal.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McKinney. David Button?
I live at 637 South Broadway. Hey, Button. People have spoke my concerns, they haven't said anything, though, about the traffic. And right where you're talking about is where it comes from four lanes to two. And I can sit on my front porch and hear the tires squealing and people cussing as they race. They don't want to be behind the car in front of them and take them 10 more seconds to get where they're going. That's one of my main concerns. The other is, it's a slippery slope. You let one business in, how are you going to tell the next one no?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brent? I'm gonna butcher that one. It's more because of the handwriting.
Come on, try it. How about?
Burlemeyer.
Burke Meyer. Push it up.
It was a T, not an L.
All right. Yeah, so I'm Brent Burke Meyer. I own the property, 645 South Broadway, which used to be the old Pineapple Inn Bed and Breakfast. Now we operate it as a short-term rental in the area. Just listening to a couple, and I think a lot of the people opposing this, I am in favor of this. I think it is beneficial for the community to continue to grow, to have revenue-producing businesses in the area. And I know that, it was mentioned that people that come in here, invest in this property that don't live here, don't care, don't invest in, in the community, and that's an absolute incorrect statement. I do care. I put a lot of money into that property to revitalize it, to rehab it to what it is now, so that it's not an eyesore. And I'm part of the, you know, I've been part of the chamber, part of the tourism department, even though I don't live in this community, I feel that it is very important to me as a business owner to be a part of that. And, you know, I understand that people want to say, well, it, it opens up the gate. Unfortunately, the gate's already open because there's a conditional use license in Georgetown's zoning ordinance. So that's just, that's just what it is. Each conditional use license is based on that specific situation, it doesn't incur onto what others. Yes, I know you can set a precedence, but it doesn't mean that just because we allow one thing, we allow another. In my opinion, this conditional use license, they have met every standard of that conditional use, and the parameters have been put on it by planning and zoning. So ultimately, the official responsibility of the Board of Adjustments is to make their decision based on the law that's written in your ordinance, is not on whether somebody likes it or not. That's, that's not, that's not the position. I understand that some people can be that. I'd venture to say that most people don't even know that my property exists, except for Mr. Prather. And doesn't cause any problems to the community. And every time that there's been a false complaint made about my property, the, the enforcement officer has talked to the man, and there's been nothing substantiated. So, I, I just really highly recommend that you all stick to your guns on what's best for Georgetown, and not what's best for the people that are stuck in the past and don't want to see things change or improve.
Okay, okay. Thank you, thank you. Anything else for you? Okay, quiet, 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 please, quiet, quiet, please. Please, please limit the backtalk, please.
He doesn't listen.
I know, he, he stated that, it's okay. Please limit the backtalk, please. Thank you, Tammy Lusby Mitchell?
Hi, I'm Tammy Lusby Mitchell, and I live at 105...
Mr. Prather, Mr. Prather, please. Thank you.
I live at 105 Highland Court, and I've lived in my home for 35 years. And first of all, I do want to say that I admire the business and all that you do for the community. So, this really has nothing to do with that, I just wish there was somewhere else that you could have this business. So, it's a historical neighborhood, and I'm asking that you deny the recommended conditional use permit for the following reasons. It is a residential neighborhood, and while there have been professional businesses in the, in this block in the past, there are none but the funeral home and, and an Airbnb currently. And I have, I'm very aware of the Airbnb that is currently there, and the problems that have ensued from there. Businesses located in this historical residential block do alter the neighborhood. The property is located in a high-traffic area, where a lane merges into another, and just past a side street, Clay Avenue, where there is a history of accidents. Also, children use the sidewalk, walking to Garth Elementary and Georgetown Middle School. The application says that there will be four employees and three clients at a time, a total of at least seven vehicles at a time, looking at one, at a one-lane driveway. In the paved area, it doesn't appear that there is safe entry or exit or adequate parking, although that does look adequate. I am concerned about the stormwater runoff, and I, I do hear what you're saying about that, but being a city councilwoman, that's something that we always pay attention to. So, for these reasons, I really hope that this business remains open, but I would like to see it somewhere else, and I hope that you will deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Is it Kathy Culbertson?
The President, we're gonna be... Or you can wait.
Does she need to sign in?
He signed in.
He signed in in there?
He did sign in.
Uh, Bob?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I'm Kathy Culbertson, this is Bob Culbertson, I think he's gonna say a few words after I do.
Okay.
I live at 655 South Broadway with Bob. I have lived there for 36 years, and I, there was a, a comment made early on today that this is in Wrighton Downtown Georgetown. And I can guarantee you that those of us who live on South Broadway, where we live, do not think of us as being Wrighton Downtown Georgetown. We think of the, of the neighborhood that we moved into 36 years ago, and the neighborhood that is still there, as being a residential neighborhood of older homes. Those of us who moved into that, to this neighborhood, we live there because we care about historic homes. We wanted to live in an older neighborhood, we wanted to live in a residential neighborhood, we love Georgetown, and this is where we found our home. I would like to kind of describe that neighborhood as saying that these are folks who do love older homes, we value our neighbors, our kids walk to school on those sidewalks, our children did not take a bus to school until they went to high school, they went to Georgetown Middle and to Garth Elementary School. This is the essential character of that neighborhood. And I've heard, there's, there is a physical essential character of a neighborhood, but there is also, and I think this is still physical, because these houses are historic and, and, and there's an important physical nature, but there is also an essential character of a neighborhood that comes from the fact that it is a family-centered residential neighborhood. And this is the essential character of this neighborhood, and I think that a standalone business that no one lives in would be, would fundamentally change that. And I think, I hope that's something that, that the board will, will listen to and to take into consideration. I think that this business, and again, I agree, it's not, it's nothing personal, and it's not against this particular business, but I think that any standalone business in this situation jeopardizes the historical residential corridor that leads into the business district. In addition to this, I would also speak to the busy street. I think Mr. Button spoke to that very well. We live at 655, which is across the street and a little bit south of where this house is. We are right in that merge, and we see it every single day, and we, and sometimes, you know, you feel like you're taking your life in your hands a little bit when you pull out. But to increase traffic in that area is truly a safety concern. It really is. And we have even kids that, you know, there's, there's a crosswalk up above there, but you have, you know, kids trying to cross the street from Georgetown Middle there. It's, it's just, it's a bad spot, and to add additional traffic would be a problem. I would say, this is also not our first rodeo. We've been here, you know, before, several years ago, to speak to a similar situation, which did not happen, largely because we turned out and we spoke up against it. So, I would like to, to point that out. So, in, in essence, I don't just think this fits the criteria, as Dr. Binham alluded to. It adds nothing positive to the neighborhood. If this was a nice residential home and someone lived there, that's wonderful, we would leave things as they are, that would be a positive. I don't, I think it changes the character of the neighborhood, it sets a precedent, and for a character change for the future. And I hope you'll vote no.
Thank you. Mr. Culbertson?
Yeah, Bob Culbertson at 655 South Broadway. I agree with everything she said. I will say a few other things. One is, he said you should follow the law. Well, the law says, Kentucky Statute 100.243, before any variance is granted, the board must find that the granting of the variance will...
That, this is a conditional use permit?
Oh, I'm sorry. Anyway, I think it's in your, your wording, anyway. Will not alter the essential character of the, is that right?
Okay. Yes, that's, yes.
That's all I wanted to get to.
Okay, that's fine, yes. That is in the conditional use permit as well, yes.
Right, so it does say, will not alter the essential character of the general vicinity. This is a neighborhood of residences, so this would change the character of the essential, of the, I'm sorry, character of the area. The other thing I would point out is that our comprehensive plan, a couple of things. One is, and this is a historic neighborhood, I can give you, it's called the Georgetown, I'm sorry, Scott, South Broadway Neighborhood District. It's a designated historic neighborhood district, it's in our comprehensive plan. It's a neighborhood, it's not a business area, it's a neighborhood. I would also point out that on page 254 of the comprehensive plan, I'll just read from it. "Based upon the feedback received from our community members, there is an interest in the protection of our historic downtowns, neighborhoods, agriculture, community centers, and natural areas. If we want to keep our past a part of our present and available for the future, it is necessary to pursue actions and all options today to limit the loss of our collective heritage through preservation and protection." I think that is one of the main reasons when we came to the board, or I guess it was this board, before, for a similar thing, it was denied because of our historic neighbor, neighborhood, and it would change the character of the neighborhood. You know, people that like Georgetown, one of the things they like about Georgetown is driving in on these streets and seeing all these residential, old residential neighborhoods. That's part of the character of our community. And if you allow one business in there, then you're allowing future businesses in there. There are no businesses there now, other than the funeral home, and what he has doesn't even require a variance, I mean, it's outside of that. So, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need to enter any of those into record from the forms that he had, or is that okay?
Sure. I brought them written in here.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure. Jeannie Bevan is next?
I'm Jeannie Bevan, and I live at 721 South Hamilton Street, and we own 723 South Hamilton Street also. I've lived there for 42 years. Our properties are behind and very open to 650 South Broadway. Most of the points...
Can you speak up a little bit?
I can try. Most of the points that I... Most of the points that I've written down are already ones that are brought up. But a conditional use permit, to me, implies a lower traffic business, which this isn't. We don't have any driveways that will have twenty-five to thirty ingress and egress incidents per day, which, that might be conservative. It might not be the same every day, but it's a lot coming in and out. And also, another thing that comes to mind is, with the discussion of buffer zones, professional parking plans, and possible highway changes even, it feels more like a zone change without a zone change application and process. And once this begins, that will happen.
Thank you, Ms. Bevan. Keisha Lansaw? All right, take it.
My name is Keisha Lansaw. I live at 141 Irving Lane. I have been a patient of Era Wellness Spa for about three, three and a half years. And first, I would like to say that while I may not live in this particular neighborhood, I am an invested person. I was diagnosed with celiac disease about five years ago and with Hashimoto's disease two years ago. And Jasmine was the first person that I had seen who actually listened to my concerns because I was written off as, "You're tired, you're lazy." You know, you just need to, this is what, the cards that you've been dealt. And Jasmine can, has kind of created a plan to help me get energy so that I can be active and play with my six-year-old. So, yes, I'm invested in this business. So, without her, I don't feel like I would be where I'm at today. And I do have, hearing other people speak, I kind of have some questions and maybe I'm not really well-versed in this area. That can kind of be answered. I've, I've been a resident of Georgetown for five years. And driving to Jasmine's place of business, I noticed that the proposed area she wants to move to is right across the street from a funeral home. And while someone had said that that's not a business, I see it drawing a lot more traffic, which is what her neighbors are concerned with, than what a wellness spa would. You know, a funeral may draw a lot more people, a lot bigger crowd than what three customers would at a time. So, that's just, I, I don't know. Maybe I'm, it's just a question or, I don't know if it's a question. It's just something I, I brought to mind. But, yeah, I, I am invested and I would like to see for Jasmine's business to flourish and for her to continue to provide care for not only individuals like me, but others in the community as well. She, to me, she's an asset. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Katie Prather?
Hello, everybody. My name is Katie Prather and I live at 628 South Broadway. I've lived there over thirty-five years. I grew up in Georgetown and I've seen a lot of changes, a lot of changes that were good and perhaps a lot of changes that have not been quite as good. I'm here to oppose the conditional use permit of the spa at 650 South Broadway. Historic Georgetown will celebrate 250 years next year and there's four entrances to our town that are embellished with old homes, some that were built in the eighteen hundreds. In fact, we have a resident here of one of those older homes. My house, house was built in nineteen hundred, as are some of the other older homes in that area. Many of these are landmarks and it's our responsibility to protect the heritage that we have and it is up to us to protect our largest investment, our homes, as well as the integrity and character of our community. These avenues set the tone for what we want our visitors to see and appreciate about our community. In the last forty years, we have developed business districts and a bustling downtown. It is not in our best interest to allow businesses to encroach in our neighborhoods. We don't need businesses establishments in our residential areas where families live and neighbors thrive together. Due to the housing crisis, it doesn't make sense to me to remove one of the houses to be a business in a residential area. There are several of us that live on that street who could very well have their businesses in their homes as well, but we choose not to. We all have homes and we all have business places that are elsewhere. 650 South Broadway is, as Mr. Button pointed out, located where two lanes converge into one as drivers jockey for position. District Seven has put out an annual report saying that 23,600 cars go through South Broadway. And it, that was a twenty-three, no, twenty-four, twenty, twenty-four report. It is up eight thousand cars from 2023. So, we have a lot of traffic and as Jeannie pointed out, twenty-five more cars coming in and out of one driveway is a lot more than just a resident would do. And it's gonna be adding to an already area that is backed up from my driveway and sometimes all the way up to Hiawatha, down to Clayton Avenue. That is what we call our neighborhood. Another concern was the, the three thousand square feet in a time before. They had not mentioned any of the conditions that they're gonna make. If you're gonna start paving anything extra, and that will be paving extra permeated, I like the idea of seeing that and that will be very helpful. But the runoff is a concern because Broadway already at Clayton has a flooding issue. The applicant is asking for a conditional use permit, which is essential to or would promote public health, safety, and welfare of that zone. I don't really see it being essential to our public health. These are words from the issue and analysis. If you continue on in that, it also says to justify the, to give that, that permit. They're justifying it, but what they're justifying is, is just not quite good enough. It is going to change the condition, the character, and integrity of our area if you open up a business there. And again, that's opening up Pandora's Box. If you let one in, you're not gonna be able to say no to another one and it will just go on down the street. We'll end up looking like Broadway in Lexington where, you know, you've got an insurance person, maybe an architect, tattoo parlor, whatever, could come next door. And I don't want that, none of us do. The staff also has in your package a lot of addresses trying to state different conditional use permits that have been given in the past. They clearly say that it does not substantiate the, the character of the area, but they want to point out, right now, there are no permits other than what we've already just, you know, mentioned, which is really, you know, what's coming up. None at all. That speaks to the character of our neighborhood, the character and the integrity of our neighborhood. There have not been any, some of these businesses too, that they were talking about conditional use permits, are, they went back forty years ago. We have not had any new conditional use permits in the last fourteen years. That's the character of our community and our neighborhood now. It just, it, the criteria is, is interesting, the way they put it together and I appreciate it. I appreciate your business. All of us need a place to work and to thrive and a place to live and we don't need to have them mixed up. I just basically, you know, wish the, the applicant well, however the business is not essential to our area and continue to say that it will not promote the, the public. That's the interesting word there, public health, safety, and welfare. And it will impair the integrity and character of our street and community. So, therefore, I think the permit should be denied.
Thank you, Ms. Prather. The next person on the list was the applicant, Ms. Wheeler, so after that, we have Brittany Dargavel.
My name's Brittany Dargavel. I actually don't live here, but I do choose to work in Georgetown, so.
Do you still want the-
I was gonna say, do you still want my address?
Home, home address?
Okay, it's 1398 Twin Creek Road and that's Sadieville. Okay. I am a nurse practitioner at Era Wellness Spa. I have many years of experience in trauma ICU, but I have found my passion at Era. Have any of you all ever taken care of a sick family member or a loved one? At Era, we serve patients dealing with a range of conditions from cancer, autoimmune disorders, diabetes, and many more. When you think of the word spa, I know it's, it's so easy to assume that we, it's all about pampering on the outside. But here at Era, we go beyond that. I am incredibly proud to be a part of this team. They not only help you to look better on the outside, but it's to make you feel better on the inside as well. We offer more than just beauty treatments. We're a wellness spa promoting full-body wellness. Era has become a beloved part of the community and we believe that this, that we would thrive at this location. We would offer so much for the locals as well as visitors. Our clientele spans from Savannah, Georgetown, Frankfurt, Lexington, and beyond. So, Lexington, they have all of these spas that they can go to, these wellness spas, these doctors, but they choose to come to us. Why wouldn't you want to support a business that has helped the community flourish over the past six years, as Jasmine's has done? Era is not just a business. It is a home and our clients are truly our family. What better place to take care of our family than in this beautiful historical home? Thank you.
Thank you. Ashley White?
Hello, my name is Ashley White. I live at 119 Chinacock Hills Drive here in Georgetown. So, I just kind of wanted to touch on how this business has affected me and the youth of the community. So, I graduated from Great Crossing High School in 2022. Growing up, I never really knew which career path to follow as I was passionate about so many different things. However, on March 13th, 2023, I began working at Era Wellness Spa. And little did I know at the time that this job would ignite a newfound passion for me. Since then, I've had the privilege of working alongside incredible individuals. These amazing people have not only become colleagues, but mentors, guiding me as I've navigated adulthood and faced some of the most challenging moments of my life. I've also seen firsthand how Era Wellness Spa has supported our community, from donating to local and national charities to providing unwavering support to those in need, including both our staff and clients. This business truly makes a positive impact. Working here has not only deepened my passion for wellness, but has also inspired me to pursue a career in nursing. I want to help individuals feel good both on the inside and outside, providing care and support that nurtures the body, mind, and spirit. Moving to the South Broadway location will provide our clients the opportunity to experience the beauty of this historical location as well as provide us with more space to expand our wellness services. And I would just also like to add, I know many of you have concerns of, you know, keeping the family orientation aspect of it and this business is like a family. I lost my father in 2023 and Jasmine and Sean brought, took care of me and my mother and brought food to our house and supported us through the whole thing. And I can't think of more of a family thing than that. They closed down the spa. The day of my father, or the day of my father's funeral, just to come and support me. And, you know, this is truly a family. This is all of our family right here. And so, we, we would be great neighbors and we, we are very family-oriented people and this is, this is a dream that we really love and want, just want to come true. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Frank, go ahead. Pull the plug on me. Yeah. So, you said, we talked about after ten applicants, which is like thirteen now, sorry, that we would go back to the applicant. Do you still, should we still do that?
That'd be fast.
Go ahead.
Board, before the applicant speaks again, staff would just like to clarify a, a couple of statements that have been made.
Sure, that'd be great. Thank you.
The first is that conditional use permits do not create precedence. There was a mention of a prior version of the staff report that did include prior issued CUPs, which I think does a great job of demonstrating the authority of this board to issue CUPs, but nothing else beyond that. So, we want to be very clear that it does not create a precedence. To that point, it is also very important to understand that a conditional use permit must stand on its own merits. If there were, you know, a CUP next door or there had been or anything like that, that doesn't matter. We're looking at this case in particular and specific to its potential impacts to the community. I would also just like to, to clarify that at this time, this is not a future land use map amendment, nor is this a zoning change request. Again, as staff had stated earlier, this is a conditional use that is listed as a conditional use in this zone as it sits today. With that said though, one point was brought up that staff seems, does concur with. And that is, the potential of removing a house from the housing stock could create a, a change to the neighborhood's environment or character that is more than just visual in nature. And so, to that point, staff would like to point out one thing in particular and that's that conditional use permits do not transfer with the property. In the event that this were to ever be sold, the conditional use permit would be extinguished. With that in mind though, I think it is very important that this board may want to consider some sort of condition that would preserve the residential character of the structure in the event that in the future it were to convert back to residence. Staff specifically recommend that no modifications be made to the historic facade and that if the board fills it, it is then reasonable to condition anything else in that light, that that may be also beneficial. Finally, staff quickly did take a look at expected trip generations of similar types of facilities. At PM, peak traffic, a facility like this at this size could be expected to create up to six additional trips per hour. It is important to note though, however, that the, the applicant has stated that they do not take walk-ins and they've, you know, said on average how many, you know, cars or, or patients they expect to see at any given time period. And so, that might, number may not be accurate to what a general, a general number would be. With that said, I would then defer to the applicant to answer any other questions.
Okay.
Mr.-
Yes.
I have, I have to have a question. If I could just throw that out there, if she can help me get that into her first.
Sure. What's, what's your name?
By the way, Harold Stint, I would like you here.
Okay.
You swear I'm-
Yeah, I'll get to him.
You did say I do, didn't you?
I did.
Sorry. Could you, could you sign in real quick? I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. So, we'll let Mr. Stint speak at the podium and, and pose the question, then we can go from there. If you could come to the podium and just state your name and address.
What, yeah, what's your house number?
605 South Broadway, Harold Stint. Sweetheart, I'm late getting here. In, in your description of your business, I understand that, that you do not, it's by appointment only. You don't take walk-ins. But is, are, is product sold? Do you sell product to your patients and clients that when they run out of, they can, do they come to your place and get it or do they go to Walmart or they go to GNC? Or do you get a, you go to the spa and buy a box or a package or whatever? Do, do you actually just sell product? Now, you can answer that as you're making your presentation.
Good. Okay.
I may have more when that's done.
Oh, I don't know. I mean, how much is coming?
Miss, you, you can go ahead, Ms. Wheeler, answer that question. Sure. Sorry. Lot of walking. Back and forth. Go ahead. walking. Back and forth. Go ahead.
Just that one specifically?
Yeah, yes, please.
We currently sell, like, skincare that's actually, like, prescription-based, so we'll make that prescription for them, and then we have it in office, or they can order it online.
Do you, do you have product, like, on a shelf?
Yes.
Per se, okay.
But it's like, it's not for them to take off, like, it's behind the counter so that we prescribe it, and then we give it to them.
Okay.
Would that be just in for people with an appointment, or could?
Oh, yeah.
People come in and buy that?
Yeah, like I said, it's prescription-based, so they come in and they take, we diagnose them with whatever condition, and then we provide that, that treatment for them, whether it's something to take home or a treatment to do in-house.
Okay. Thank you.
And what about all the other issues?
Is there, yes, is there any other questions from somebody who's already spoken that want to be addressed to the applicant? Ms. Prather, go ahead.
Another mention about the parking lots. I know conditional use permits, that's not a great step the staff is offering. If by law that the house is sold, it does not go with the property. But how many properties then are owners in the future going to want a ten-spot parking lot in their yard?
What's?
It's a comment for, for the boards are going to be thinking about as well as her to know that, you know, it's not a general.
Okay.
Feature of a residential home.
Yes. Does anybody else have a specific question for the applicant that's already spoken?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Culberson?
Culberson, correct. Go ahead.
Okay. Do you provide health care services? So you mentioned, like, migraines, kidney stones, cancer, not feel all yet.
Hashimoto.
You provide acute care, and so if somebody has, with any of those problems, needs acute care, do you provide that, or does that work?
Okay.
Should I just answer them?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, sorry. Yes, so we provide acute and chronic care. So if someone calls us and they say, hey, is there any openings today? Like, my family's sick, I don't want to get sick, is there some kind of, like, IV that I can do to kind of, you know, protect my health, then, yeah, we were able to bring them in and provide that care.
And that would be an appointment that you would make?
Yes, always.
Okay. Sure, go ahead.
So if somebody has an acute problem and they can't get into the C room, what do they do?
They can go to their emergency room, or their urgent care, or their primary care.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else that's already spoken have a question for the applicant? Okay. The only thing that I had that one of the speakers brought up had to do with the funeral home, and I didn't want to blaze over her questions, so I wrote it down. Can Plating and Zoning or Mr. Perkins speak to that as far as, I mean, that's probably been there since.
Nineteen seventy-two.
Before.
Al was writing, I didn't hear the person.
There was, there was a person who spoke about the funeral home being there as one of the businesses that's in a residential area, and I wrote her question down, I didn't want to forget about it. She had asked that.
Well, unfortunately, only, only a few of us remember when it wasn't there, because it's been there a long, long time.
That's true, the initial use permits have been there for forty years.
It is a pre-existing non-con.
Pre-existing.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, go ahead. Hang, hang on, hang on, hang on.
It's a pre-existing non-conforming use. However, the property has received approval for various conditional use permits for expansion, particularly parking.
Okay, thank you. All right, you go ahead, Ms. Wheeler, you can, you can, you can sit back down, and we'll get to some of the other speakers here. The next one on the list that we have is Mark Echols.
I'm Mark Echols. I live at a thousand seven Indian Trail in Lawrenceburg, Kentucky. I've been a friend, and, and I actually, we all work professionally with, with Jasmine and Sean, and I've known them for about four years now. They are, and actually, I'll speak, I'll speak to Jasmine directly since Jasmine seems to be under fire, and she's a kind, caring, considerate, respectful person. And as far as the neighbors, I understand where you guys would be concerned, that nobody wants a business to move in on top of your house, but I bet she is, if you know the character of her, that she is, she's somebody who, who would care about you and be considerate and listen to you, and if there was a concern, she would take that at heart. And, and just, just know, that's the kind of human being she is, and it's kind of a testament to her character that there's about thirty-some people here that have come here to, to support her and her business, and it's just, it's just something that's, it's just, it's just, they are awesome people, incredible people, would be great neighbors to have over, and we've all had some bad neighbors sometimes. She's not somebody to be a bad neighbor, she'd be awesome to have around. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Echols. Amy Comer?
Hello, I'm Amy Comer. I'm a twenty-seven-year resident of Georgetown and a voter in Georgetown.
Your ad, address?
At one twenty, I'm sorry, one fifty-three Clubhouse Drive.
Okay, thank you.
And my husband and I have lived there, or lived in Georgetown for twenty-seven years, and raised our children here. We are invested in Georgetown. We're not going anywhere. But I'm also a nurse practitioner. I work full-time at the VA in Lexington in primary care. I take care of our nation's veterans, and I've worked very part-time as a nurse practitioner here at Era Wellness Spa. And we're here today to determine if you will consider this property with this conditional use, and to be converted to a business instead of residential. And I'm sure you know that there's, I thought, I guess I considered on down Broadway as part of this neighborhood, but it's not, but of course, Johnson Funeral Home, there, just a little further down is a vet clinic, and a little further down is a chiropractor clinic, so I was, I guess, confused more than anything as to why this would be, and then to the south, of course, is just nothing but commercial stuff, so I guess I was confused as to why there was such a concern with that. But I know now that this is their neighborhood, and they're very protective, and I understand that. But as you've heard many times over, Jasmine and Sean are wonderful neighbors, and they're wonderful people, and I'm, I'm blessed to work for them. See, I would personally love to have them as my neighbors. I don't care if it was in my neighborhood, because it's a quiet, tranquil, peaceful property or business, and people are there to have a tranquil experience. It's not a honky-tonk, it's not anything that's loud or disruptive, and the hours have been stated as just very limited hours and limited customers coming in and out. I know that change is hard for people, and it's one thing I've noticed in the twenty-seven years I've lived in Georgetown, there's been nothing but change, and for me, it's good change, because I love all the unique and spaces and places that Georgetown has, and this med spa is one of those unique places. And I think we have a lot to offer for this community, and that off-street parking is wonderful for this business that they don't have currently, so it's a big advantage for them, and there'd be very few cars coming in and out at any time, but please consider them for this permit. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm guessing this next one is a package deal, Chelsea and Charlie Smithson?
Good evening. My name is Chelsea. This is my husband, Charlie. And we live at six thirty-two South Broadway. First of all, I just want to state that, like, we're not here to debate her business. It sounds like an amazing business that you're doing amazing things in the community. I'm here just because I'm a little concerned with the location. We're kind of newer to the neighborhood, we've been here for about three years, and one of the reasons we wanted to move to the neighborhood is because of the old-world Americana, just that beautiful old houses, people sitting on their front porches. So I would, I personally would love to see another family take over that home, so we can have, you know, more neighbors to, to wave at and whatnot. Lots of different points, a lot of them are repetitive, so I am not going to take up your time. For me, there is a bit of safety concern with the increased traffic. I walk my dogs up to the cemetery. A lot of times, my eight-year-old on a scooter is with me, if you guys ever see me, wait. So to me, more cars coming in and out of that driveway is a little bit concerning. Also, if they do have products that they're selling, what about the deliveries and those delivery trucks? Like, what is that going to do to the flow of traffic? So I do wish them all the success, but for me, I would like it to stay residential. So thank you guys so much for listening. Do you have anything to add?
No.
Short and sweet, he's the man, a lot of words.
Thank you all. Mallory, is it, Toothaker?
Toothaker.
Oh, man.
I'll be the only Toothaker here.
Hold that out.
I am Mallory Toothaker. I live at one oh eight Mary Todd Drive in Frankfurt. I've known Jasmine for about seven years. I consider her, I've been a patient of hers. I also consider her a friend. I have watched her build her business from the ground up in a beautiful historic building, and I feel like she's going to do the exact same thing with this property if given the chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Nathan Crowe?
Good evening. I'm Nathan Crowe. My address is one eighty-eight Sunnyside Trail, Lexington, Kentucky. So I moved to Lexington recently. I've, I've lived in Scott County for over twenty years. In, in Scott County, I've met the best of us, I've met the worst of us, right? I've known Sean for almost ten years, and he's definitely among the best of us in Scott County. I still consider myself a Scott County resident. I had to move for business for reasons, but, but anyways. In terms of his ethics and his character, he is absolutely among the best of us. So I hear you, I understand. Sean hears you, Jasmine hears you. We, I, I get it. As a, as a homeowner, somebody that has owned a home for over twenty years, twenty-plus years, I've been where you are. I've been, I protested people moving into my neighborhood for various reasons, but I will tell you that something about Sean is he has an uncanny ability to make everything he touches better. In ten years, I've seen him do some miraculous things with what, what he's given. I saw what you and Jasmine did with your business, and you just got, got, I, I saw the, the first week that you opened it from what it is today, and did a phenomenal job just turning it around. So I will, I will say that you all will be gaining a friend and a neighbor instead of just looking at it like a business. And I promise you that if you give him a chance, he will hear what you, what your concerns are, and he will address them, he will address your concerns, and he will, he will make it better. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next one on the list was Bob Culberson, who's already spoken, and next we have Tom Prather.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having the patience to listen to all of us. Let me first say what a couple of other folks have said. I have only heard great things about Jasmine. In fact, a former colleague of mine that I used to work with contacted me to tell me what a great person she was, and I've heard only compliments about the business. So this is not in any way about this young lady or her business. My name's Tom Prather. I live at six four seven South Broadway, directly across the street from, from this property. I've lived there for forty-eight years. And what I'd like to take a few minutes to do is, is focus on the staff report and some of the content of the staff report. It was correctly pointed out earlier that we have to pay attention to the staff report, and you all have to be in a position to make certain findings after listening to the crowd and reading through the staff report. I'd like to take a few minutes and look at what's in the staff report and what's not in the staff report. I think Katie may have pointed out earlier, it was, they've given us some examples of conditional use permits that have been approved over the last forty-seven years. Not that long a list. They did not give us any list of those who were not approved, and who came to this commission unsuccessfully, and who either withdrew their application or were voted down, as was the realtor who tried to move into the house three doors down from this one two or three years ago. You all turned them down for these same reasons. It was about a business being in a residential area. That person litigated and sued with you all, and I understand it went through several layers of court, Charlie, until it is finally resolved now?
Oh, yeah, it is resolved.
So, but, but there are precedent, precedents where this board has turned down similar applications. When you look at the list the staff put together, only the first one at five fourteen South Broadway, a building that doesn't even exist anymore, at one time housed Elkhorn Heritage Real Estate Office. That is the only instance on this list where an entire house was used for a business anywhere from Garth all the way up to the end. We have protected this neighborhood. The staff report gives the impression that these things have almost been granted willy-nilly, and why are we questioning this one? The reason is it's a significant change from past practices. This will be the first time an entire home will be used as a business. That is a significant change. In fact, I think we can take this data and use it to make a finding that it says that, I actually kind of agree with the president, with the applicant, that they probably would not adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare, but they absolutely would alter the character of the general vicinity. And that's what I hope you'll focus on and use prior precedent that's been used to turn this down. Thank you.
Thank you, Prather. The staff one, go ahead, yes. This would be a good spot for questions, I think, too.
First, I'd like to thank the Prather's for bringing up the staff report. It is nice when someone reads it. I appreciate that. To clarify again, there was an old version of the staff report that had made it into this back when it was originally scheduled. Again, we've seen the error of our ways on that one. We realize that that muddies the water, that confuses the situation, and staff agrees that there is precedence for both approving CUPs and denying them. But I would really like to, again, specify that as we consider this CUP tonight, it is important that it stands on its own merits, and that we analyze the situation specific to its proposal, as well as the conditions that we're putting forward with the intent of mitigating those potential impacts to the community. I would also like to point out that if it was ever construed that the decisions of this board or any other within our community are willy-nilly, that is certainly not staff's position, and I think just by the number of people who've showed up here, it's very evident that these decisions are very important, and that they do create, you know, it's, it is a meaningful decision that the board is making. Beyond that, again, staff is, is continuing to listen to the concerns as they're brought forward, and I encourage the commissioner, the boards to also, again, think if it is possible to mitigate a potential impact with a reasonable condition, and then to also understand that if it is impossible to then reasonably mitigate that impact, if we can't create a condition, then we should not issue a conditional use permit. If we can create a condition to reasonably mitigate those impacts, then that's what we're being asked to consider tonight.
Thank you. Sure.
Just to clarify, the point that we made earlier about my property and the property next door to me, the Airbnb had to come before no board for approval.
Correct.
It did not require a conditional use permit, or we would have had that conversation two years ago before the thing opened. I just want to make that clear.
Okay, understood. I want to get to the next speaker, because it'll be a good delineation for the last round that we have for Judy and Scott Moreland. Is that correct?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
I will come up there, too.
Yeah, don't make a call.
Don't do that.
Watch out.
My name's Scotty Moreland. I live at 652 South Broadway, right next door to the prompted question.
You can see our car and house and...
And you are?
I'm Judy Moreland. I live at 652 South Broadway with this guy.
Thank you.
We've lived there for twenty-four years, and we bought that house because it's in a nice neighborhood and really enjoyed the property in the area and everything. And I don't know a whole lot about the politics of properties and stuff like that, because I drove a truck for forty-eight years out on the road, and I only visited home once a week, but...
Congratulations.
Thank you. That's why we've been married sixty-four years.
I saw your expression. I understood.
My personal concern is, I built a huge screened-in porch on the back of the house there, and we enjoyed sitting out on the screened-in porch and watching the birds. I have a big bird feeder and watching the birds, and watching the squirrels play, and watching rabbits run around in the yard. And my family would come up there, and they'd sit out with, everybody says, every time somebody comes to visit, "Let's go down the back porch." Now...
It's a day.
If this business moves in, it's going to look like we're looking forward to coming out and sitting and looking, seeing cars and smelling exhaust fumes. That's what we've got to look forward to. That's, I'm not against anybody starting a new business, just not next to me, but I live forty-five feet from that house. And that's what I've got to say.
No, on the weekends, we get really rowdy. No, that's not true.
Thank you all so much. I think the only question that I had written down that came up out of the last few speakers was from the Smithsons on Delivery. Ms. Wheeler, could you come back up to the podium for that question? And if you guys wanted to ask that specifically again, I mean, I don't want to speak for you, so go right ahead.
I was just curious about like how often you get deliveries. Does it come by UPS, FedEx? Is it a semi-truck? Like, both of the, because traffic is a concern, I've got a small kid. Like, what did that impact look like?
Honestly, the past few years, which is how much business we have currently, we about, we have as many trucks coming through as I do for my Amazon deliveries at home. So, yeah, it's just like that. We, it's usually Amazon. It's like, I have my three guys, and that's Amazon, my mailman, and my UPS guy. So, pretty normal.
Okay. Is there any other questions from the speakers we just had for the applicant this time?
With the sales, is there any...
Go ahead.
Guess between, is that, you know, retail now or not?
What's the question?
With the sales of product, does that...
Yeah, it's not like a store, you know, like a skincare store where people are like coming in and shopping and then leaving. Like, again, these people are coming in for their appointments, and then we make those recommendations, whether it's something that we can treat them with there, or we can treat them with at home. And then that's the product that they purchase at that appointment to take home and do based off of how we advise them to use it.
What, and they give the refills?
Well, they'll either come for their next appointment. We actually have an appointment on our online appointment thing that says skincare pickup. So they still have to make that appointment in order to come in and pick that up.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wheeler. We'll go to the last round of speakers here to finish this off. I can't make out the first name, but the last name is Dickinson?
Sueeta.
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 Yes. I'm Sueeta Dickinson, and I live at 627 South Broadway. But when you're protecting my home as a residential area, it's not just me, a little old lady living in an old house. I have five other members of my immediate family that live there with me. Three generations, a ten-year-old, all the way up through me. I'm eighty-one. And so you are protecting this area for me. I've lived there since nineteen seventy-nine. And we, and I've sent my four children to Garth and to the middle school there. I am a former math teacher and a current attorney. And I want to talk to you about the change that the zone changed for 650 South Broadway, because that change will have a long-term and far-reaching detrimental effect on Georgetown, my neighborhood, and on my property. Encroaching on the residential nature of the National Registry of Historic Places will cause the residents to change from homeowners eventually to renters. This shift will also discourage the robust maintenance of these lovely old houses. During the past few years, several of these homes have been enhanced with extensive and expensive additions and renovations. My family alone, in the last sixteen years, has invested more than three hundred thousand dollars in our home, relying on the fact this is a stable neighborhood, protected by single residential zoning, and included in the National Registry of Historic Places. And now, the zoning board is being asked to change a nearby single residential zone property to a commercial zone property for a wellness spa. We don't have any problem with a wellness spa having a business, but let it be in a commercial zone where it belongs, not in our residential neighborhood. This change in zoning will leave us without remedy in that we cannot move our historic house or our neighborhood. On the other hand, the wellness spa can be located in one of a myriad of commercial zone places in Georgetown. So it is a matter of fairness that those of us who have relied on the existing zoning for several decades be allowed to continue to live in our neighborhood in peace. From my vague regulation about how our neighborhood was added to a National Registry of Historic Places, I believe the application was funded by federal and/or state grants. The application was spearheaded and supported by some agency of local government. The local government has a continuing moral obligation to uphold the National Registry. The homeowners on this National Registry have a continuing obligation to protect our neighborhood. And 650 South Broadway is included in the footprint of this National Registry, in that the local government believed at the time of their application that South Broadway, along with North Broadway and Main Street, enhanced all of Georgetown. They successfully added these neighborhoods to the National Registry of Historic Places. And with the passage of several decades, these homes have become even more valuable and rarer as architectural treasures. To preserve this historic neighborhood as all of us are obligated to do, the existing single-family zoning must be maintained. Further, any deterioration of South Broadway neighborhood will cause Georgetown to lose part of its charming welcome into the town and its picturesque downtown area. Therefore, the broader community and visitors to Georgetown will also be impacted by the damage the requested zone change will cause. For all these reasons, my family joins me in urging the zoning board to maintain the current zoning of 650 South Broadway and continue protecting our unique historic neighborhood for the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Singer? Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Chair. Sorry, Mr. Singer. Great, wonderful. I know it's been stated a number of times before, and Ms. Dickinson does bring up some, you know, good information, but it must be, again, clarified that this is not a zone change. This is a conditional use permit for a use within an existing zone that does not change the status of this property as a residential zone property. And again, if this were approved, transferred permit goes away, reverts back to its original thing. And I believe Mr. Fleming also kind of floated the idea, if, you know, concerns are aesthetic, the board is in within its power to consider additional conditions, things of that nature, to continue to address some of these concerns.
Okay, thank you. John Singer?
John Singer. I live at 607 South Broadway. Mrs. Dickinson, she kind of stole my thunder on most of the historic nature, but the core of Georgetown is East Main, South Main, I mean, East Main, West Main, South Broadway. Those, you know, if we could imagine East Main, if all those houses going out through there were turned into doctor offices, law offices, real estate offices, you know, it would change the nature of our town. So I think that, looking at the overall good, what is best in this situation, I think the historical nature of our town is most important because you can't, you can't get it back once you've lost it. It's two-hundred-and-fifty years going, and once you change it, it's gone. Furthermore, the nature of funeral homes in small-town Kentucky, you know, they go in old homes on the main drag. And, you know, Tucker's been there for probably eighty years, and Johnson's been there for about sixty. If you go to Lawrenceburg, Owentown, that's the nature. So, you know, you can't really, that's apples to oranges on the funeral home situation. And that's all. Appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you, Mr. Singer. Diana Brooker, I know you had a question earlier, but if you want to go ahead and speak?
First, I'd like to say thank you for everything that you do. I do appreciate it, everything that you give back to the community. We really do appreciate it, yes. Diana Brooker, 604 South Broadway Street.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I appreciate all that and all you do. Your integrity is not in question. Your business is not in question. I know we have folks here who've worked in the industry that have come to talk as well. Thank you for everything that you do. That isn't what the question is here, I think, for most of us that are sitting here. I pay a mortgage. I save money for a down payment. I raise my kids there. They went to Garth. They went to GMS. I serve in the community on the school board. I'm the president of the Elizabeth Village. I too am very, very active in this community. But I also moved at 604 South Broadway with my husband and my children because I wanted to live in a historic home. This is one of the last corridors that we have that are homes. We're not living in the past, sir. We live in the future. This is where I live. I still pay a mortgage. I still owe money on that house. And I pray that all the work that I'm doing, because my columns all have cracks from this winter, that the money that I'm going to invest in it is not going to go away from me. But I will tell you as a realtor, for years and years, this will affect our integrity of our neighborhood. I have twenty-five going through my neighborhood, but I love my neighbors. I care for my neighbors. I notice if they leave their cars on, or their lights on, or somebody died. I went and sat with a neighbor in the house because one of my neighbors passed away. This isn't about a business. My family with my business partners mean the world to me. They're my people. There's, a lot of people here are my people. But the point of the matter is, it will change the integrity, you know, the conditional use. I went in and talked to Rhett about this for a while that day, you know, before the last meeting. And part of this conditional use is talking about, will it change this area? And it does. It does. Because I will tell you as a realtor, and there's a handful of realtors in here, over here as well, that I will tell you, one of the things that we are going to look at is, what is the neighborhood? What are the homes like? Are there businesses? What is that neighborhood like? This is going to change our values. My kids, my four kids, like it or not, talk about when I die, and about how they all want my house and all the things in it. But I want that to be there. That's my legacy to my children, and I don't want this to change. I take a lot of pride in living in the historic area. Mr. Carol Anne, who lived there for twenty-five years, gave me all kinds of historic information about my home. I hear people who are here supporting the business talk about it being in a historic area and how great it would be, but they don't pay the mortgage. They live out of town. They live in Cherry Blossom. I promise you, Cherry Blossom is not going to let a business go up in the middle of Cherry Blossom. They have an HOA. They're not going to allow it. Lawrenceburg, all these different places where all you come, I appreciate it. But we live here. This is our mortgage. This is our house. This is our home. These are the neighbors that I love. And we really are standing here in front of you for hours, as we did the other time when it was defaulted, and we sat here then and said, please, don't take our neighborhood away from us, because we love it there, and it means something to us. And when we stood here in front of this group a few years ago, when another business tried to come in and you voted it down, we all stood there for hours as well that night. This means a lot to us because it's our neighborhood and our home. We don't want to look out, as this couple said, and see businesses, you know, in their backyard. We appreciate the business. I hate to say this, but you could find another spot that could be just as great, really, but it's just not in our neighborhood, is what we're just trying to say. And we wish you the best. But I just wanted to say, please vote this down, and let us just have our neighborhood, and let us keep, as the big sign says, coming into Georgetown, historic Georgetown. Please let some part of this remain. Everybody on city council, everybody on the county, you guys, you guys, all have to deal with all the problems that we're having, and the school board with all the growth that we have. But let us keep some of the integrity of what Georgetown really is, because everybody advertises the heck out of that. Let's keep it historic, please, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooker.
I also have, I hate to say this to everybody, because I know I talk too much, but I have two letters from two of my neighbors, and they're a little lengthy, but I will cut out what everybody else has already said. I do want to, I do want to read a couple lines for them because they asked me to. Preston and Laura Lacy live at Six Town South Broadway. I'm only going to bring, read a small little section. More importantly, the ingress and egress of this driveway is particularly dangerous, being at a location where US Highway 25 South Broad, Broadway Street narrows to one lane, traveling northbound, and widens to two lanes, traveling southbound, which is only compounded with being one residential lot away from the intersection with Clay Avenue and having steady amounts of pedestrian and bicycle traffic. This is not a problem for residents who are used to timing their entry and exit, when we can, and exit to avoid all types of traffic on this busy road, but for customers of a business who are not used to making a turn onto this road beyond a street, beyond the street intersection with a stop sign or traffic light. It can prove very problematic. And then from my other neighbor, Caroline Kelty, 601 South Broadway, she wrote why her family moved to this historic home, why they moved to this area, but went on to say, in addition, I'm concerned about the potential long-term depreciation of property values in our neighborhood. The conversation of this property to, the conversion of this property to a business could create a ripple effect that leads to this being a less appealing area for potential home buyers. Many of the residents in this neighborhood have substantial investments to our homes and this community, and I believe this proposed change could undermine those investments. And she went on to say, please, please vote this down as well. Did you want those for my neighbors?
Yes. So those will be entered into the record. Thank you, Ms. Brooker. Jimmy Owens?
Jimmy Owens. I live in Frankfurt, 5218 Huntington Woods Road. Just standing here to let you know that I'm also a client of Arrow Wellness and Spa. I've been going there for two years. I'm actually a hundred and seventeen years... I'm actually a hundred and seventeen years old, but you can't tell. No, I'm kidding. No, I do have a health journey story. I've lost two hundred and thirty-nine pounds thanks to Era. I was at a place in my health where I was prediabetic and hypertension, and was turned down for every surgery, every medicine out there, and I found Era and was able to get on their wellness program for weight loss. And today, all my blood work is normal, so I will allot to them. And not only am I a client of theirs for two-plus years, but within a month's time, they started to feel like family, and I certainly understand their position and their investment in the community. And I, for one, believe, as I get older, change is hard. Trust me, I know, but I also know that if you don't change, if you're not growing, you're dying. So I think that with them taking on this property and advancing their services to other clients, I think it's going to be a benefit to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Owens. Sam Krueger, Kruger, sorry about that.
Sam Krueger, six six one South Broadway. I really don't have a lot more to say than what everybody else has. We live at the end of town. I've had people tell me, we're the end of town. They built Indian Acres. We were the last house in town. And, you know, we bought our house because we wanted to be in the old neighborhood, and we'd like to maintain that.
Okay, thank you. We're on the last page here, so just a few more. Again, I want to make sure everybody gets to speak. David, it's just because of the handwriting.
I'm, I'm here, but I don't mean to say anything, because all my neighbors have said everything I can say.
Okay. All right, thank you. Lara Wilson?
I actually gave you my business address, if you need my home address.
Oh, that's fine.
Is that okay?
Okay.
Okay. I'm Laura Wilson, and I'm the owner of Altered Salon on Washington Street.
What's the address there?
Five twenty-five Washington Street.
Thank you.
As a local small business owner myself, I understand the changes and rewards of running a business in Georgetown. I also understand how critical it is for local entrepreneurs, especially female business owners, to have the opportunity to own their space and invest, invest in their future and contribute to the growth of the community. That's exactly why I'm here today, to support, to support another local female entrepreneur, Jasmine Wheeler, and her request for a conditional use permit for Era Wellness Spa on six fifty Broadway Street. This is not just about expanding a business, it's about ensuring, ensuring small businesses can have a lasting place in Georgetown, rather than being at the mercy of landlords, rent increases, or commercial turnover. Women-owned businesses are a driving force in our local economy, and we need to ensure they have the ability to secure and sustain their place in Georgetown. When we allow local business owners to purchase property rather than rent, we are giving them the ability to create long-term stability in their business and employees, invest in property and surrounding community without the uncertainty of being displaced, build equity and strengthen their finances, independence, just like large businesses do. Era Wellness Spa is not a corporate chain, it's a local business that has already made a name for itself by providing quality services and supporting the health and confidence of people of Georgetown. This permit would allow them to stay and grow right here, rather than being, risk being forced out due to leasing constraints. As a female small business owner, I know firsthand what it means to build something from the ground up. Women business owners in Georgetown deserve the same opportunities as large companies to own property, to expand, and to have long-term security. Era Wellness Spa is a perfect example of a business that Georgetown should support. They have already demonstrated their commitment to the community, and approving this condition, conditional use permit will ensure that another local, locally-owned, female-led business can be down, can put down permanent roots here in Georgetown. I urge you to approve this permit, not just for Era Wellness Spa, but for the future of small business ownership in our city.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Garrett Hufana?
Pretty close, Hufana. I'm here with my wife. Can you, just, you need to sign.
Yes, that's right. If you could pass that down, if you pass that down there. And have you, you all were sworn in, correct?
I was.
Okay. Charlie?
You were?
I was. I'll do it again.
You swear a firm? Thank you.
Go ahead.
And your name again, please?
My name is Garrett Hufana. I am the proud homeowner of six three four South Broadway Street. I am the proud, young, twenty-six-year-old homeowner. We've only lived there for just over a year now. One of the reasons we moved here was for a sense of community and neighbors. And I love small businesses. There you are, sorry. I find it inspiring that you have a small business. However, a business is not a neighbor. A neighbor is a person. And I wish you well in your future endeavors, and I hope you find a place here in Georgetown to keep your clientele, but just not here in the home, where I would prefer a neighbor. I'm sure my wife has more to say.
Go right ahead.
Hello. Well, yes, what my husband said, I just want to give total credits to you all for being a female-owned business. It's an amazing thing. I actually come from a female-owned company called Cooper Marketing, so I completely understand, and I definitely think that's an amazing accomplishment to do. Total credits to you all, and I truly hope that you all can find another location in Georgetown, regardless of what happens. So, kind of going into this, I think another individual did say that they are the future of, that like there is a future for home residences in this particular area. We are true to that. We are, we have owned our home for one year, just about. Basically, it's been since January of last year, so yes, a little bit over. But we have owned it, and we are new, and we want to have the children, and we want to like live here for a long time. We love how we are between a middle school and elementary school. We love how we're able to interact with our neighbors. It's, I feel very safe despite being very close to a downtown area, which is a very unique and beautiful thing to have. There were some, I think there was a question earlier, that I don't, I can't necessarily give a, an exact answer to, but I can say as a witness what I've seen. So with the funeral home across the street, what I have witnessed is that there is a, that they do have, they do look to have a police officer on hand and on staff that helps to guide them out when there's a large amount of individuals there. Sorry, I'm like shaking.
It's okay.
I'm not good with public speaking. But I guess there's other, like, questions I do have, just a couple. For my first question, where do you all see yourself kind of expanding in the future, within the next five to ten years? Do you expect to potentially have an expansion on the property itself? Do you potentially see, look to have, to gain more clientele? If so, how, like, what's an estimated number? That's just something, I work in a marketing company, and we do try to have plans for the future on these kinds of items, and tangible numbers. And then my other question was, sorry, I'm drawing a blank right now. What? Yes, so there was, that was my first one. My second one was, there will, as, again, as a worker in a business, there are events, sometimes events that are on property for the business. What kind of events do you imagine happening potentially for your clientele and guests? Just to see whether it be, for example, the first welcome event. Sometimes people have a grand opening. Do you see yourself having a grand opening? Holiday parties, it's a beautiful house, a lot of beautiful areas for people to come in and visit, that will alter people kind of coming into that particular area. We ourselves, we got, we actually had a small intimate wedding with some of our close friends, and we made sure to communicate with the schools for people to park, that way it wasn't as much of a inconvenience for anyone living on the street. We want to make sure that this is a very safe area for people. I'm very passionate about people coming in to this area, for whether it be children around the area, for people that are walking their dogs, as stated previously. I care about people kind of coming in and staying, and just having kind of an overall safe environment, given the circumstances of the road. We do live very much in that merge zone. I have had, I've been honked at multiple times, even though I have my turn signal on, where I do have to kind of turn in, and it's just how sometimes the lighting hits during the day, people don't see, things can happen. I care about people not getting into accidents, and just an overall feeling of safety, comfortability for the future in the area. But yeah, that's all.
And what was your name and address again, for Charlie? That's okay.
I'm so sorry. My name is Catherine Kidman. Yes, and eventually will be Hufana. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you both so much.
Appreciate it.
The last one I had on the list was Mr. Sims. Harold, did you have anything else to add?
Oh, I did.
Go right ahead. That's it?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, appreciate your time tonight. Again, I'd just like to reiterate to the applicant.
Your address?
Six oh five South Broadway.
For Mr. Harold Sims. Thank you. Go ahead.
I would like to reiterate the sentiments of my neighbors, that this is not a comment about you as a person or your business as a vital part of the community. I think we all, as business people ourselves, we all understand and respect your role as a businessperson. Now, we want you to kind of get, try to wrap your mind around where we're coming from, and why we'd like to protect our investments in our neighbors, in our neighborhood. You've heard mo, most of the sentiments of my neighbors about how they would like this to remain, so I would like to address some of my comments to basically what this board's job is in front of you, not to tell you how to do your job, but the conditional use, the definition in the zoning ordinance means a use which is essential to, or would promote the public health, safety, and welfare in one or more zones. One of the zones you're talking about right now is the zone that our house is in, is R one B. So is the, is the Wellness Spa essential to this neighborhood, or would it promote the public health, safety, or welfare in this zone? And I think you can, the second part of that definition, that you can't not read the whole thing, says unless the restrictions on the location size, the location, the size, the extent, and character of performance are imposed, unless you impose some conditions on this, that's why it's the name, conditional use permit, unless you impose conditions on that permit, that the, these, that these, their use would be essential, or they would be, it would promote the public health, safety, and welfare. So are imposing conditions such as restrictions on the size, restrictions on the signs, restrictions on how long they can work, is that going to change the character of what you all talked, heard about tonight? The character of the neighborhood, the, the, our young neighbors that want to start families, and as somebody who's grown gray in the community, it's nice to know that there are other children moving in, and there are other people interested in locating this area and making it a home. Those forces are, I don't know that you can impose conditions that will protect that integrity and the character of this neighborhood. Just the fact that it's going to be a, a commercial district, it would invite the commercial people in. The neighbors that, that I've, come, the people that calm me up when trees fall on my house, the people that help you when you've had knee surgery and can't bring your garbage cans up. Those are the things that, there's no amount of conditions are going to change that. And that's what the business is not going to, when a business is not located next, when a business is located next door, the benefits of the neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood is changed, and the integrity of the neighborhood is certainly changed and not able to be fixed by conditions imposed upon it. So I, I think, I think you have to look fairly hard, and when you go to make your findings of fact, you have to make factual determinations about, is this essential to the character of this neighborhood, and can we fix it so it fits in this neighborhood? And my, my suggestion is to you that it's hard, and I think impossible. One matter that I do think you have to look at is, when you get ready to do this, you know, there has been very little information about signage, except there was some reference to, that you would look at, to, to a couple of different sections of the sign ordinance. But I also seem to recall, without having had the benefit of going back and looking at it in detail, I still seem to think that there's some criteria in the conditional use zone, that they have to comply with all the other characters of the zone itself. So if you have sign restrictions in an R one B zone, those sign restrictions are, would be applicable, would have to be applicable to a conditional use permit in this zone. I don't think you could expand the sign allowance in an R one B zone because it meets the criteria in another one. And it must, it looks like to me the only sign allowed in an R one B zone is a wall mounted sign, and the last thing that we would want to see in a neighborhood are flashing signs out front or wheeling things that, letting you know that they're having a sale or a special of some kind. That, that's the slippery slope that we've heard talk about tonight. So I do think it's important to realize is, remember the important parts of this definition are the character integrity of the zone, and can you, can you make this fit to satisfy the integrity of the zone by imposing conditions on it that will make it be more, more pleasing and more fitting in the neighborhood? And my suggestion is that you cannot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Does staff want to speak on the sign that he brought up at all? I think it...
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So as previously stated, condition number, what was that, six probably? Six. Any signage the applicant would wish to have, if they do receive approval, would have to adhere to the ordinance. Specifically, this ordinance states that no single-family structure, regardless of permit of use, unless granted a home occupation, basically, they're only beholden to a wall sign. No freestanding signs, no self-illuminated signs, no illuminated freestanding signs at all are allowed in residential zones.
They would still have to adhere to that.
Right. And the specifics, forty, maximum of forty-two inches tall, four foot, square foot area.
Go ahead.
On the subject of expansion of use, unless the applicant wants to speak to it, just to kind of get ahead of that.
The one for, that the couple had about expanding and clientele and events on the property, or something separate?
Well, just expansion of use in general.
Okay.
Beyond what is approved, if it is approved, any expansion of any sort has to come back to this board for reconsideration, almost as an application on itself, to be considered with additional considerations, if at all.
Okay. And then I, thank you. I think the only question we had for Ms. Wheeler, if you want to come back up one more time, if there's any others, that's fine, but for the, yeah, I think you had a question about expansions in the future, more clientele, and possible events on the property. Did you want to direct your question to her on that? Go ahead.
Oh, I have a certain question. Yes, no, this is basically, I was...
You guys, ready?
Sorry, I have a severe neuromuscular condition.
Okay.
It's really affecting me right now, so I just need to sit.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Are you okay to answer the question?
Yeah.
Okay, go right ahead.
Yeah, I think there's just a couple of questions regarding this kind of future expansion, but specifically, it was a general question, but I was... but specifically, it was a general question, but I was most concerned about just the number of clientele, of how much you want to kind of increase your clientele as time progresses. I'll just say five years. But, and then my second question was just, what kind of events would you picture having down the road, whether it be holiday parties, or especially the grand openings, been probably a thing that a lot of businesses traditionally do? And how would you handle that? Handle those events, I guess, for example?
Okay. I brought, I wrote down a lot of the different questions and stuff, so regarding that one, let me just find it real quick. So, as far as expansion, we plan on not employing any more than what we have. As you can see right now, I have a severe condition, so I can't, I don't want to grow. Like, I love it the way it is. It is perfect. It pays my bills, it pays my employees' bills, so there's no need to stress me out in growing into some kind of crazy thing. So, we love it the way that it is. We plan to incorporate other services to provide better wellness to our clients, but it's not on a scale of trying to increase traffic or anything like that. It's just providing better and more services to, to the community. And then as far as events, I haven't really even thought that far, to be honest with you, so, but if they're, you know, what we currently do in office, we do three events per year, one in April, one in July, one in November, and it's from ten to six, and we basically have specials. People can call in, people can order it online, or they can come in and purchase, so that's, that's what we currently have, but I haven't really thought about what we're going to do Another thing that I saw, again, I heard it reiterated a lot about turning this, this community into commercial. I just want to reiterate that I'm not asking for ten properties to put ten businesses in. It's just one property, one business, which is not, you know, commercializing the area, so, and, and you know, we're about as homely as it can be. I think, I think it speaks to what you've heard tonight, that I, like, we preserve like a very neighborly way of business. As far as preserving the old historic, history of those buildings, like, that's kind of really great news for me to be in there, is I've had that six years of experience. The current, the past five years, the building that I'm currently in is a hundred years old, and, you know, I didn't like pick that place because it's like, you know, a good place for my business for various other reasons, other than I fell in love with the history behind it, just like I fell in love with the history behind the, the building I currently have. So, that I feel like is good news for the neighbors, that I am one that would preserve that history with them, and that, like, that is a big priority to me. As far as traffic, you know, again, we have scheduled appointments, we have a very low volume of employees, that's not going to be an issue. You know, I know several people talked about the past denial, and again, it does not take precedence over what's happening tonight. I did speak to that individual about what happened, and I do know what the end result was of that, but we won't go that far. Let me see, conditional use recognize, oh. And I know a lot of people were talking about like the altered integrity, and I looked over here, and we all recognize that, that conditional uses would impair the integrity and character of the zone, so that's something that you already know about a conditional use, that there is going to be some form of impairment, but of course, if, if that impairment can be as minimal as possible through those conditions, then it should be approved. And I don't think there's any better business or person to, to approve that to. If it's not going to be me, I can't imagine who it would be. You know, I have that history of being in these historical buildings. Obviously, you, you see what my character is like. It's a business that has perfect hours for a residential area, and, and it's quiet, and it's quaint, it's upscale people coming in, so I can't imagine what other business would be better than that. Another thing too, you know, about speaking to the character of, of that area lastly, is that, you know, I, like, I really care about South Broadway, too. It's, it's really a home of my own, too. I've been here for twenty-seven years. I graduated from Georgetown Middle School, which is right down the street from my upcoming property. Before graduating, at Scott County High School, I bought my first home, and now my, my long-term home here in Georgetown, I drove down South Broadway to deliver my two children, I built a business here, and again, coming from poverty from, from my childhood years, I was able to build the American dream right here in Georgetown. Of course, a big end result of that American dream is for me to be able to, to own the property where I conduct business at. I know that a lot of people were talking about, you know, well, we'll just go in a commercial zone, and that sounds very easy, but it's actually not here in Georgetown. I've looked far and wide before coming across this property to own my own property in a commercial zone, and Georgetown unfortunately is just not set up for it. I, I spoke to the people at SBN, at Anderson Commercial, I looked on the MLS to see what is available. There is nothing for a small business owner like me. Everything is sold in like ten-plus acre lots, so that investors can come in and put down strip malls or large-scale buildings, to then again lease out space for people. Or it's like a multimillion-dollar project, which again, you know, coming from where I came, living here in Georgetown my whole life, I'm not, I'm not coming from a multimillion-dollar family. This wasn't handed to me. This is built truly from the ground up. So, I did look through those avenues, and those just weren't available there, here in Georgetown. So, you know, it's, it's put me up against this wall of, do I move my business to a different town, or do I continue to lease? And so, again, that's taken away from that American dream here in Georgetown, but again, just reiterating, there's, there's really not a better person to, to take over that spot. I recognize that change is unsettling to people. I know that you all are probably used to hearing people oppose versus people support because change is scary. Nobody likes it. But we also know that change is also a really good thing a lot of times, and I feel like, I truly, truly believe that once the dust settles, and they see what kind of character I have, and what kind of beautiful business that I have, that they will see that this is really the best option.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Wheeler.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions, thoughts? Sure, if there, I mean, I, I think we've covered anything. If there's any specific questions, be happy, but does anybody want to make a motion?
I've been a part of Georgetown since I got out in nineteen ninety-six, and I come up, I'm a student from Brooklyn, New York, so Georgetown was my first real experience at what we used to call good old, good old town. I'm from projects, and everything's on top of everybody, and I can't think. But my real question, to keep from getting the long story, this district, is it considered this area, what is considered the historic neighborhood district? What exactly is it? I like to do some...
The historic district is defined and was established as part of the National Register. As it stands right now, you do not have a local registry system, nor a local overlay. I do want to ask you for the record to make sure your mic's on, though, super quick. The light's on, sorry, I got a quick message on that one. Hopefully comes was on. But, um, anyway, to, again, to reiterate, it is in the National Register. I think it's been in since the nineties, early nineties, late eighties, but again, it's under national consideration. I don't know any state, and I know there's no local right now.
Okay, 'cause I'm just concerned, I, I think I was doing this math, and it, maybe it was established Georgetown seventeen seventy-five?
Right.
Right? Okay. So, a hundred and ninety-seven years, it's been a close-knit neighborhood, let's say, a historic neighborhood. Nineteen seventy-two, Johnson Funeral Home came in here, okay? The point I'm trying to make is now it's fifty-three years later since Johnson was here, so the question that keeps going in my head, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but the question that keeps flying in my head is, Johnson Funeral Home appears to be a good neighbor, fantastic neighbor, because it's been fifty-three years since this young lady has tried to come into this neighborhood. So, the question that keeps going around in my head as I write things down, and I listen to all of you, and I love all your concerns, because I wish New York City would have had some of those concerns, maybe it wouldn't look like New York City. And I could tell you from living in Georgetown, only being here twenty-nine years, whatever we've been here, raising daughters, going to school, and stuff like that, I'm a coach in this community, been there, been a coach for the longest. The thing that hits me is, is the two questions is, is Johnson Funeral a good neighbor, and could the possibility exist, after listening to the, the people that was for this young lady, could it be lightning in a bottle that this young lady bringing this new business in this area just may fit this area and actually enhance it as an asset? Because I'm hearing that you said you're not going to change the facade of the home, so that means I can go back up and down South Broadway on Sunday, when the traffic is a little bit down, and I can enjoy Johnson Funeral Home, whatever. There's one place that was on the end of Clayton, I'm gonna wrap this up real quick, that was at the end of Clayton. It was a multi, multiple, and I guess it got dilapidated, but I tell you what, when that building was torn down, it actually affected me, because I felt like it changed, it changed the neighborhood, if that makes any sense, okay? I know it was a flood zone, but I was, I was, yeah, yeah, very dilap, right next to Garth, but the, the thing that kept hitting me was, okay, they're going to put something up there, or they're going to gut it and keep the facade, because it was beautiful on the outside, but I heard it was a mess on the inside. So, when they took it down, it actually, for me, changed the complexion of the neighborhood. Now, if you're not talking about changing the facade of that house, I, I just don't see the problem, and with neighbors like you guys, I think Georgetown's in great hands. You're not going to let anything come in here, but with the, with the pluses that I've heard to your nature, your character, and especially for what you're offering, it would seem that it would be a plus to have a neighbor like that, that cares, and in that type of industry, that would enhance the neighborhood, the neighborhood like Johnson Funeral Home did, if that makes sense, you know? So, I'm looking at it like that, and that's my conflict, you know? Oh, property...
What's that? Oh, yeah. If you want, if, if you want to speak again, you, you have to go to the podium, please. Sure.
Yeah.
Tom Prather, again. Johnson's, I understand you moved to Georgetown...
Yes, sir.
...in relatively recent history.
Yes, sir.
For, for local folks who've been here all these great years, Johnson's Funeral Home may have predated planning and zoning. Before it was Johnson's Funeral Home, it was Taylor's Veterinary Clinic, and the Taylor family lived in the house proper, and the veterinary clinic was in the basement. This is from when I'm a young child.
Yeah, we were in school.
We were in school. That, that has...
I'm not the only one, you see.
That has been a, a conditional use permit for the funeral home, which is, Johnson's Funeral Home, over the years, became a beloved institution.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
And they're a great neighbor. Our point is, there have been no other businesses allowed anywhere in this residential district to the extent that they're asking for. We think it would change the, the character of the area. But that's some of the earliest John Johnson's Funeral Home.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Sue Etta Dickinson. And the reason that the house at the, the next to Garth was torn down? There used to be a gas station on that corner where there's just a field now, and that gas station was a commercial lot, and it had leaks in its, in its gasoline tanks, and those leaks permeated the land at that corner. And they tried to clean that house out so it would be habitable. They were unable to do that. Now, I'm not suggesting that the wellness spa will have some kind of toxic chemicals that it's putting into the ground. I don't think anybody's suggesting that. But that's what happened to that house. There was a commercial place, it ruined the land, and now they can't even grow a garden on it, is my understanding, because it is still contaminated.
I didn't know that. In all these years, you know, still being here, I still look at that spot, and I can see that old house there, and, and I actually miss it. I didn't know about all this other stuff, you know what I mean? But with that being said, I still have that one question, is it, is the, can the possibility exist that she'd be an asset to the neighborhood down the road, like a Johnson Funeral Home?
I, I mean, I'll, I'll say this, I, I think this, okay.
That's a concern. If you all take this situation and give that permit, then someone else will ask for a permit for something else, and it will be very difficult to battle that and say no to it. Pandora's box, once you open it, it's going to be one little inch after another, after another, and we'll never be able to close it again, and it will, it will change our neighborhood. I mean, even a, what, a four-by-six-foot sign changes the complexion of the neighborhood.
Okay. And that was Katie Prather, thank you.
Well, and I'm just thinking, too, there are so many nice business places that have come into being, there's got to be someplace that could make you happy. Just, it just can't be a house in our neighborhood.
And...
Go ahead.
Can I...
Uh, go ahead.
Well, my question is this, if this is a historic neighborhood, and there's no doubt in my mind, each and every Sunday and every day that I drive up and down South Broadway, that it is, and it is beautiful. It's beautiful. If it's a historic district, why are we having this conversation? Why are we allowing that?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on.
I'm just...
Okay. All right. All right, Hank, hold on one second. All right, Hank, hold on one second. Uh, Ms. Smithson, uh, could you step back for one second? Go ahead, Holden.
Yeah.
That's a fantastic question, why do we consider applications? Uh, it's very important for due process that we, uh, we follow what's in our zoning code. This is zone R1B, within the R1B zone, there are a number of conditional uses that could be conditionally allowed. One of them is a funeral home, as we know, Johnson's Funeral has renewed and expanded through conditional use permits over the years. Another one is professional offices, which this is. It's very important to bring these types of issues before the board, so that the community has a voice to speak, uh, for these issues to be examined. Um, in this, why do we even consider it though? To do anything else, I think, would be to deprive a property owner of their property rights. Uh, they have the ability to come before a board and make that case heard, uh, again, to the specifics of this proposal. And we've said it, and we'll continue to repeat this, conditional use permits do not create precedence, and we should evaluate it for its specific-
Correct.
...things that it's offering.
And I think he was saying that because of the historic registry part of it, which I don't even know if you guys can speak to that or not.
Uh, as far as I'm aware, again, there would be protections related to the structure, uh, which, as there should be, but use is a separate matter. And again, this is not, uh, this is not a, a conversation related to the zoning, or it's not a conversation related to the structure, this is specifically a conversation related to use, and what conditions, if any, could be placed to preserve the neighborhood's integrity. Uh, and again, I will also speak to clarify again, it's staff's recommendation for approval because we do find that this, uh, this use in particular will benefit the welfare of the community in the zone. And then past that, that we do believe that there are reasonable conditions that we can place that will protect, uh, from an unreasonable impact to the character of the community. And ultimately, it is the board's determination to, uh, to either find that correct or not.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Smithson, go ahead and-
So, Councilman Smithson, I just wanted to, um, say thank you for kind of pushing back and like getting the, um, kind of the thought process going. One of the things that keeps coming up is the value added that this potential business could bring to the area, and this is just more of a statement, the way I look at it, is, um, while their services are amazing and for some people have been life-changing, these are not services that I personally see a value in, that I don't use personally. Now, five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, or a diagnosis down the road, I might change my mind. So when you talk about adding value to our neighborhood, I, I'm struggling seeing it because it's not a service I'm gonna use. The only thing that I kind of look at that they're bringing in is the increased traffic. With businesses, just the nature of the beast, the increased noise, the increased trash, those type of things. So that's the lens and perspective I'm looking at when you're looking about the values that it's bringing to our little community, and that's why, for me, I'm, I'm struggling with the value added.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Sure, go ahead.
I'm just the mayor, we tore down the house. I'd like to know-
Yes, sir, I know you very well.
I don't, I, I don't think we have to go into the history of the tearing down the house.
Yeah, no, no, I just brought that up because-
Well, but, but your, your point was well-taken, the lot beside it, Katie's right, there, there were underground storage tanks that had leaked. We had hopes of turning that into a park at one time. The house next door was one of the worst outsours in the city of Georgetown. It was a meth house. The owner had turned that into, he had occupants on all three floors, including a young couple with an infant in the attic. The only heat in that house was a cook stove in the kitchen.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
We understand.
That's why we tore it down, with the four apartments in the rear that had a toaster oven for a furnace.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
They were true lights.
Yeah, I know, I know it's terrible, and I guess the point, I, you know, just to clarify real quick, the only point I'm trying to make is, when that building went down, um, the outside facade of it, to me, was beautiful, and it changed, it changed my drive from Derbya State headed towards Lexington. It changed the nature of the neighborhood, so with that change happening, again, the possibility exists that with her not doing anything to the facade, then that means the neighborhood that I've been looking at for the last twenty-nine years will not change, and it seems to be the possibility that she might be a great neighbor from everything I'm hearing, and that's all, I'm clear now.
And I, I'll, I'll say this, uh, 'cause we have to make a decision here.
Yeah.
Um, I do think the possibility exists that they could be a good neighbor, um, but I'm, I'm very hesitant because I'm worried about just the nature of the operations changing the character of that zone. I don't, I don't think anything's in question with the applicant and what they do, um, and everything they've done to the community, and I understand that it's very hard in commercial spaces with insurance and triple net and all this stuff, it's very hard, it's difficult. But I, I can't get it out of my head, the nature of what this is, changing the character of that zone dramatically, and that's, that's a big worry for me. What do you all think?
Make a motion.
You want me to? Do you, do you have anything to add, Ursula?
Yeah, I'll, I'll do it. Uh, tough situation, crushing somebody's dream, you're also tearing down walls that have been there forever in the neighborhood, people, the way they live. So, I mean, there are no easy decisions here. Uh, what I'm about to say is not gonna echo in any way how I'm gonna vote, but he does bring up a good point. Um, regardless of how long you've lived there, and you're talking to a guy that spent twenty-something plus years in the military, so I've lived in a tent, motor pool, a Conex, some pretty crazy situations, right? So sometimes the environment we're in, uh, the people we're around, uh, we can't always control that. In this situation, you did, you know, you're coming in, you're, you're talking about that, she's coming in and pursuing her dream as well. Um, what I see from living here in the last seven or eight years in Georgetown, and somebody also that has invested, getting more involved in city government, would like to see Georgetown be representative of, of all people, right? One of the directions that I see this city going is that, yeah, all we hear about is how it's growing, how it's growing, how it's growing, and we don't see the resistance to that until it hits our backyard or our front yard. And, uh, there are decisions that are being made every day that are impacting that. So, one thing that I will say too is that if in this situation, when I'm not here, you're not here anymore, and things like that, who is going to hold out for that neighborhood? Who's gonna fight for them? If you have to take on a neighbor, and it's a business, what type of business would you want that to be? You know, and like, I know, this is a, this is a tough situation, and I can see, and I've heard so many different type of things there too, but that's just something I wanna, I wanna put out there to you, 'cause there is no easy answer here. But yeah, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, Ursula?
Yeah.
Does anybody wanna make a motion?
Well, first off, before we get to that point, you've gotten, uh, my horribly wordy memo, but about the kinds of findings you need to make, um, primary of which is that this is a listed use in the ordinance, uh, as a conditional use in this zone. Uh, number two, that this is in fact a use that will benefit or promote, you know, benefits to the public health, safety, and welfare. Uh, whether or not it would alter the character of the neighborhood, and if so, how? And once you say that, that are, what conditions then can ameliorate those changes so that in fact, they can be a good neighbor, and the neighborhood can in fact be protected to a reasonable degree, if not utterly. Um, and those are the steps you need to go through. Uh, it, basically what happens is, if you simply, and, and we've done this many times, where there really wasn't this much potentially at stake, uh, where we didn't go through all the steps, uh, and significantly, the applications quite often were very small things, such as in a back room and whatnot, uh, and there was no threat, perhaps of litigation, uh, I mean, we just didn't cover all the bases we needed to. When there's this much public interest and this much investment, we, we need to hit all the points that, that-
Definitely.
Technically, we ought to hit every time anyway. Uh, so, if we get to the point of a motion, then we need to look, and in fact, I'll pull, oh, there it is. In fact, I think it's at the very back page.
Yeah, that's where I'm at.
It talks about the kind of motion you need, uh, because clearly, we need not only to protect, we need to empower, we also need to have a legal record that we can defend. Uh, but we've done that only a few times through the years, but so far, we've had a good record each time. I'd like to keep it that way.
Anything else to add, or do we need to go through this number by number?
Well, one, one thing that, that staff mentioned earlier, uh, you just need to look at what impacts you see, um, and if in fact we were to approve it, how can we then protect the neighborhood from those impacts? Uh, if they are, oh, I mean, something as, as simple perhaps as some light going off, well then, you know, what is it, a tele, no, photometric plan, well, that's gonna be required, so that would kind of take care of that situation. Protecting the facade of the building is another condition that, that should be seriously considered. What about the condition of the building just for returning to residential down the road? There are all kinds of things, a, and I hate to make this even more difficult than frankly, everybody here's already made it difficult, that's the kind of thing you need to consider, because if there's an impact, you need to try to put in place a condition that will protect everybody involved. Obviously, if, if this is approved, we want that to be successful, we don't want the neighborhood to be impacted, so we need to hit those spots, make your conditions. If in fact a condition does not work as well as it needs, it can be brought back, and, and additional conditions can be imposed, conditions can be tightened. That's not an easy process to do, uh, so don't let me imply that that's somehow an easy thing, it is not.
If I may, to clarify, I'm just gonna riff off of Charlie's stuff. Uh, staff is still in support of this conditional use permit, as we've been very clear about this process. But as Mr. Perkins has just pointed out, it's very important to consider each impact individually and try to find a reasonable condition to mitigate that impact. If at any point the board does feel like they cannot mitigate those impacts to a reasonable level, uh, staff would, uh, remind the board that it is totally within their authority to deny this conditional use permit, based on that finding and that finding alone, um, as, as is at the board's discretion.
And I know that there are some conditions there, um, that would help, but I, I think there's some things that can't be overcome.
I did try.
What's that?
No.
The, uh, the traffic is one, with it being such a heavily residential neighborhood, having a business there, period, and, um, I lost my train of thought. If, if, if I, you know, if, hmm, I need help.
It's tough.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Tammy Mitchell, 105 Highland Court. So if you find, I, I think what I'm hearing back here is, if you find that, that there are conditions that you would not be able to, if, if there are conditions that you would not be able to make better-
Mitigate.
Mitigate.
Sure.
If there's no answer for it, then you have to say no. That's what I'm hearing. Am I incorrect? I mean, is that a good enough reason to say no?
No, I think that's relatively correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm, the, the specific things that I'm concerned about that I don't think can be mitigated are altering the character of that area and traffic, the, the traffic flow, just the, the nature of it, and that's, that's where I'm at with it. Sure.
Just to those two concerns, um, as far as traffic, I just wanted to reiterate that it is appointment only, we do only have four employees on staff, so that traffic is about as minimal as it can get for a small business. Um, and then as far as impairing the integrity, again, um, you know, if, if any conditional use permit is gonna be approved on that street, I can't imagine another business ever being approved, because we, we are, we fell in love with it at, for what it is, we will never want to change what it looks like because that's what we fell in love with. Um, any conditional, any condition that you set forth, like, we will wholeheartedly abide by those, and of course, if there's, as those conditions happen and as we move in and everything, and if there's anything that the neighbors see that they feel is unfit for that neighborhood, I, again, you can see I'm a very neighborly person, I want to mitigate those at all cost, like, I want to help the neighborhood. Um, and then of course, we can come back in at any time and talk through those, but I really don't even see that happening, because again, I'm such a neighborly person that I would want to help the community and make sure, I don't wanna be a bad neighbor, you know, I don't wanna just put my business down and say this is my business, like, that will be my home as well, and that's what we treat North Broadway currently. So, um, yeah, as far as impairing that integrity, like, I will abide by any condition that you set forth, and I will be very open to any further conditions that need to be met in order to maintain that integrity.
Okay, thank you. Elise, Charlie, anything to add? Elise, you good?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Well, if, I, I hate to keep making suggestions, but rather than asking for a motion, 'cause there are several parts that need to be in a motion, so maybe we need to discuss the pieces-
Okay, let's do it.
First.
Let's go.
Uh, so, number one, uh, we, we already know it's in the ordinance, that, that's, that's not a problem.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I, I think it's probably agreeable to you that this is a beneficial, uh, service for the community.
Yes.
Maybe not necessarily the neighborhood, but for the, certainly for the community.
Correct.
Now, the impacts that you talk about, just first talk about maybe the character of the neighborhood, what conditions, and I'm, I'm looking at the chair, but I'm talking to everybody, 'cause the chair's already said they're not so sure that that can be mitigated. Uh, what kinds of conditions do you see would be appropriate to protect the character of the neighborhood while allowing this business to go on there? Now, such, such, such as, uh, we've talked about protecting the facade, there may be other things for the actual site itself, you need to think about that. Uh, as far as numbers go, I'm not so sure that that's something we could really effectively do much with, uh, I don't think there's a whole lot of leeway there. Uh, but just the residential character, what, what perhaps could be done? If you discuss that and you really don't think there is, then again, we're, we're pretty much at the end of the discussion. Uh, if there are conditions that could protect the character, well, then we can move on and talk about what those condi- conditions are, because that's the next part of the consideration. Um, but you, you need to kind of go in that order, because otherwise, if we sit there trying to kind of look at the whole thing and wondering where to go, we don't get anywhere. But if you take it step by step, you either run out of steps and you approve, 'cause you've done it all, or you run out of solutions or conditions and, and you stop there because you can't approve.
Yeah, and I, I think that's where I'm at, I, I agree, I, I think this is included in the ordinance, um, I do think it would be beneficial, uh, to the community- I do think it would be beneficial, uh, to the community. The part that I'm stuck at, and maybe I can't go on anymore, is that there's no condition I can think of that we could put in place to not change the character of the zone and not change the drastic increase in traffic. If there is one though, I'm open to suggestions. Does that make sense? I'm in agreeance with you. Okay. So I'll, I'll make a motion that based on that, we deny the application.
I would ask you to be more explicit in your motion. I mean, you said that beforehand, I'd just incorporate that in your motion.
I would make a motion that we deny the application due to the drastic changing of the character of the zone and the increased, the massive increase of traffic flow, the drastic in, increase of traffic flow.
All right, again, I'm, I'm going to keep feeding the pabulum as we go. Due to the change in the character of the zone, but you just said, and you need to put in the motion, and the inability to place a condition on this use.
Okay, okay.
This business use that would otherwise mitigate that.
Yes, the, the, the inability to overcome or add a condition that would satisfy. I, I like your wording better, but.
That's why I practice this all the time.
I know. So is that okay for the motion? Charlie?
If, if you want to add the traffic too, because that would add to it, although, I mean, there are thousands already, I'm not, although it may be kind of dangerous because of merging lanes and all of that. So I mean, you could add that if you, if you feel like that's.
Yes, I would, I would like to add that.
So basically, and its location, where the lanes merge, which is a difficult traffic, condition anyway.
Yes, and then would it be okay if you read that back?
Yeah, oh, absolutely. You're not getting rid of me that easy, sure I am. Would you want to use the phrase, just a difficult traffic condition already, or actually plug in the word, a dangerous traffic condition already?
I think, I think difficult's fine.
Okay.
I think difficult's fine.
Good, I, I, I agree, thank you.
All right, I can, I can predict that.
All right, let me see if I've got something I can read. All right, it'd be a motion to deny due to the, the change in the character of the zone and the board's inability to add conditions that would mitigate that change, as well as the location of this site at a merging or, I'm not sure exactly how to say that, I'll, I'll figure something out real quick, but at a site of merging traffic where the lanes merge, uh, uh, which is already a difficult condition on the road, or which is a difficult condition now.
Okay.
All right, let, let me see if I can write what I just plugged in there.
No problem.
Or perhaps to refer to the health, safety and welfare of the children walking on the side.
No, no, that, I'm going to leave the motion as it is. That, that's going to be how I want to word it.
All right, motion to deny due to, uh, the change in the character of the zone and the board's inability to add conditions to mitigate that change. And its location where, uh, lanes merge, uh, creating a difficult situation now.
Or a difficult situation that already exists?
Well, now.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it's presently there. It's not something that, that we anticipate is presently there.
Okay, that, that would be my motion.
Okay.
Does anybody want a second?
A second, a motion.
You got it.
Frank?
Yes.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We've got, what, three to two?
Yeah, two opposed.
All right, let me make sure I get who voted.
Who, who opposed?
Okay, McIntyre, yeah, yeah, okay, I got you, okay.
So it would be denied because of.
Yes, the, the denial passed with a three to two vote.
Okay.
Yes.
That's all we have for tonight, thank you. Is there anything else you need to add? Okay.
That's, that's the agenda.
All right. Meeting adjourned, thank you all.